Good morning. We'll call to order the regular meeting of July tenth, two thousand and eighteen, of the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida. At this moment, it is my privilege to call up the Reverend Dan Holloway from Unity Spiritual Center of Vero Beach, who will lead the invocation. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Joseph Flesher, and we will begin with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders. Would everyone please rise?
We bless each person here and bless the business of this meeting. We recognize that decisions made here affect many people, some immediately and some in the time to come. We hold sacred the honor that has been given to share our views today. We open to clear guidance so that we may ask the questions that must be asked, receive the clarity that we need, and make the decisions that must be made for the good of all of the citizens of Indian River County. In gratitude, we pray, and so it is. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the greatest nation on earth, land of the free, home of the brave, the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reverend Holloway, thank you very much for that. Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Adams, to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. We move to, there are no proclamations. We do have one set of minutes of May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen.
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Adams, second from Commissioner Zork. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes five zero. No informational items. Commissioners, the consent agenda, would anyone like to pull an item for additional I'm gonna go ahead and pull item E. And is there anyone in the audience that wishes to have a consent agenda item pulled for additional discussion? Seeing none?
Approval is amended.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. I just pulled this item. This is a repair job to our main relief canal conveyor system, and I just would like to ask, I guess, Bill DeBrol to walk through this, because it's a little bit unusual. We're being asked by a, like a financial escrow company to send the checks to them instead of the contractor, and so, Bill, if you could just make, clarify and make sure everybody's fully understanding what we're doing here, please.
Certainly. Good morning, Commissioners. Bill DeBrol on behalf of the County Attorney's Office. Costello Brothers is the lowest, most responsible bidder on the repair job to the main relief canal, PC main screening system. The conveyor system needs to be replaced. Costello is our contractor that's going to do that. We were contacted by Costello and Great Horn Financial concerning payments made under the contract. What the county will do in this agreement with Great Horn and Costello is still make the checks payable to Costello. They will be then sent via wire transfer, is the most easiest, to Great Horn. Great Horn will go ahead and disperse, because the check will be sent with the approved pay application, of course. Great Horn will turn around and disperse one hundred percent of those proceeds to the individual subcontractors. Great Horn does not have the ability to pay less to a subcontractor as provided in the approved pay application. They will structure the profit a little bit differently, going to Costello Brothers than would normally be done, and spread out the profit over the life of the job. These sort of circumstances in a firm like Great Horn comes up at the suggestion of the bonding company. If Costello is nearing the top of their bonding capacity, they will have a company like Great Horn come in and assist so that the rate to Costello on the bond will be reduced, or the collateral that would normally be required by Costello to be posted in support of the bond, that would be reduced because Great Horn is now in the picture, and the opportunity to, quote, rob Peter to pay Paul, has been eliminated by the entrance of Great Horn. The county still has the opportunity to claim the bond if something goes wrong with the job. We are covered under a policy of insurance for fraud and mismanagement as far as Great Horn is concerned. We're named as an additional insured on that document. So, this is a case of first impression to me. I've discussed this matter with Mr. Spirica, Public Works Director. He's familiar with organizations like Great Horn and has seen and worked with these sort of companies before, and after investigation, our office, along with Public Works, is confident that this sort of situation is acceptable for all.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Chairman, I don't see any downside for the county. It seems to me this is just a financial matter between the two parties to facilitate things which will lower costs, so I'm happy to move approval.
Great. I'll second that. We have a motion from Commissioner Salarri, second by myself and Mr. Smith. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Jeff Smith, Clerk of the Court and Comptroller. Bill did talk to me about this as well, and I recommended, instead of signing a check and endorsing it and mailing it, that we do a wire transfer. That way, we can protect the money, so that's, he did discuss it with our office as well.
Okay, good. Thank you, Jeff, for that information. We do have a motion, and second, is there anyone in from the audience that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. That concludes the consent agenda. There's no constitutional officers. We move to public items. A, the public hearing. It's a request for authorization for the Community Development Director to make application for a Community Development Block Grant in the Housing Rehabilitation category, and request to approve the Indian River County Community Development Block Grant Housing Assistant Plan for Housing Rehabilitation and Replacement. This is administrative in nature, and good morning, Mr. Bowling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Stan Bowling, County Community Development Director. I'll be doing some of the presentation this morning, joined by Corbett Aldi from Guardian Group. They have expertise in this particular type of application process, but this is for a federal fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, CDBG grant. We're in the window for applying, and we want to take the opportunity to do so with that. Also wanted to just mention that staff is shepherding a sign-in sheet for any members of the public who wish to comment or are here for this particular hearing. Just a brief timeline for this particular process, the Citizens Advisory Task Force met last month. They took public comments at a public meeting. They discussed community needs, and they made recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. You all heard that information at the first public hearing you all conducted on June nineteenth. You took public comment. There was a recommendation to apply for the housing category, which we have done in years past, and also if suitable business partners found for economic development application. We have not had a suitable partner up to this point, but the window for economic development applications is always there. So, we're ready, willing, and able to address that if that opportunity arises. The housing application has been drafted. That's in your backup material, and this is the second public hearing for you all to review the draft application, allow for public input, and to consider a resolution to authorize signatures and leverage use of ship funds, because this is a type of project, if we get the application, that ship funds are normally used for anyway. And I'll turn it over to Corbett to finish out the presentation.
Thank you, Stan. Commissioners and public. Corbett Aldi with Guardian Community Resources. It's our pleasure to help with another grant application for the county. This will be a second public hearing to cover the draft application and attached Housing Assistance Plan and resolution to authorize staff to proceed with the proposed application. The housing program is to benefit low and moderate income persons in the unincorporated county, and it is to provide housing rehab benefit to those applicants that are successful, and it is code, safety, and health type of improvements to the home. The policy that guides that is the Housing Assistance Plan. We have an updated plan in your package to approve that meets the current CDBG requirements. It has criteria for ranking applicants, so if this grant is successful, you would advertise as the county and receive applicants from homeowners in the unincorporated county. And then the policy dictates the process for income certification, for qualifying contractors, for bidding, and then conflicts of interest and these kind of things that may come up during the process.
So, if I, just to clarify then, it still has to be either low or very low income area, but it can be any area within the county? We're not limited geographically just to one community?
Correct. Anyone in the unincorporated county that isn't living in an owner-occupied house could apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the housing assistance policy plan? The benefit from a housing CDBG Community Development Block Grant is to those homeowners that apply successfully and are awarded for the code, the safety, disability, accommodation, those kinds of improvements to the house. Green standards are eligible and promoted by the program such as energy-saving improvements and appliances, and there is, the housing assistance plan is required, but also ship for fifty thousand dollars is a local match for points. And those programs can complement one another. The service area, as we mentioned, is the unincorporated county. It's a rehab repair program. Now, demolition replacement is eligible. There is an average cost per house of about sixty thousand dollars of CDBG, but some, one house could have eighty-five thousand dollars, and another house could have twenty-five thousand dollars depending on their need. So, it is possible for a house that truly does not, has too many repairs, needs to be demo-replaced to meet code, and is cost-effective with ship funds, it can be done. It's not guaranteed, they have to apply, and it has to be feasible. A minimum of eleven units will need to be done to get the maximum score in this application, so eleven houses throughout the unincorporated county. Three of them have to be low income, and two of them have to be very low income, and that's, that's set by the HUD. It's the same, and they update those every year, okay? And it's the same income limits that ship follows. For a quick rundown of the budget, you're looking at about six fifteen of actual activity funds, fifty thousand dollars of leverage from ship, twenty-two thousand for temporary relocation for those that need somewhere to stay while their house is being worked on, and then administration, which is the housing delivery budget, is a hundred and twelve. These are budget numbers, and the term for this to be spent is two years.
Commissioner Salarri?
Administration, how much of that is the consultant? How much of that is the county community development?
It's just a budget. A typical budget for a housing delivery specialist, which is usually paid out of admin, would be about eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars for the whole two years.
Okay, so it's possible for the administration to be less than a hundred and twelve thousand, and we can use those monies for other houses?
Almost always is. Almost always is less, and is almost always moved over to construction. Some counties do use it for their own staff administration, but usually not, not Indian River.
I'll just suggest for you, on top of my head, that a good number to shoot for is probably about seventy thousand, nowhere in that for administrative fees. Be better to put the money into the community if it's all possible. Thank you.
And when will that be determined?
You, go ahead.
Just select a consultant and negotiate. What we, our experience so far with CDBG, we've had a housing type of CDBG like this one in the past. It tends to be, to skew a little bit more toward the higher end, the max, the cap, at fifteen percent, because it is management-intensive. You have eleven, maybe fifteen, houses, individual projects. You've got inspection services and things like that that'll happen with it, whereas, say, a sewer project, CDBG, it tends to be more like in the seven percent range. So, it will be negotiated, but we certainly hear your input.
What you're seeing there is also that the department rolls over the housing specialist, the housing rehab specialist, the code specialist. It goes and writes up and evaluates the houses. They lump that into admin, so it looks a little bit bigger. For our timeline, an estimated timeline, this is due August thirteenth, and we should have site visits by September, October, and awards by November, December of this year. Probably the public input or the public outreach the first quarter of next year, and then we may be bidding houses by next summer. And with that, I'm here for questions from the public or commission. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions on the presentation? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on the matter before us? Good morning, welcome.
Joe Adlet, forty-five seventy, Fifty-seventh Avenue in the county. I'm just here to, in support of this project, and like I always said in the end, it's all about fair, and I'm happy to see that it's not for any one particular community, but for the whole county, so everybody can benefit from the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adlet? Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Freddie Woolfork, forty-five ninety, Fifty-seventh Avenue. I too support this staff recommendation. It feels a void that sometime exists when you want to do some good for a particular person, and they don't want to move out of their old house. It may seem old to somebody else, but that's their castle. So, when they can get assistance from the county through this program, they're getting an opportunity to stay somewhere they feel comfortable and secure. So, I applaud the application process going forth, that these individuals can have that pride of their castle. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Freddie. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to this matter? Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. Richard Baker from Pelican Island Audubon Society. Is there a way that we can add in a little bit of environmental, like planting one oak tree, having a green landscape to help enhance the application to make it, make sure that you get a lot of public support behind it? You could think about, you know, cutting back the grass and the lawns and things and planting trees. I just think that it would be a great opportunity as an example in the community there to be environmental, too. You had, the green program was listed as, talking about refrigerators and things like that, but you could expand it more to the environment, too, I think. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, and I think staff heard, heard your comment there, and if there is a way to work that in, I don't, I don't see a problem with that, and as long as it does provide, you know, points for us, I think we'd be all for it, so. Anyone else from the audience that wishes to speak to the item? Seeing none, and ample opportunities being given to all, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move approval.
We have a motion from Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Adams, to approve the application. Any discussion on the dais? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you for coming this morning. We look forward to the process and getting the application in. And then, those of you that spoke, so sign, you need them to sign your sheet, correct? You're all good?
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. There's no public discussion items. To move to the public notice items, Mr. Rangel, would you do the honors, please?
Thank you very much. We have a public notice of a public hearing scheduled for July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. It will be to consider an ordinance authorizing a temporary moratorium for a hundred and eighty days, where until a comprehensive review of the impact on the county's ecosystem is completed with regards to the land application activities of Class B biosolids. It's to be legislative in nature, and again, this public hearing will be held on July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, and with that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Dylan. No county administrator matters. We move to departmental matters. The first one is community development. Board consideration of St. Christopher's Harbor Homeowners Association's overdue cost-share payment for the Head Island Channel Restoration Project. And Roland, you'll, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Roland DeBois, County Chief of Environmental Planning. I do have a PowerPoint. This relates to Head Island, which is also known as the Green Salt Marsh Conservation Area that the county acquired as a donation in the mid-nineties under the county's Environmental Lands Program. It's just west of St. Christopher Harbor subdivision on the South Barrier Island in the lagoon. What you're looking at on the overhead now is a two thousand and fifteen aerial that shows what we call the land bridge, where it was the connection of the island to the mainland through St. Christopher Harbor, dating back to the mid-fifties where it was constructed. It was previously a natural canal. Here's a current, more current aerial like two thousand and eighteen, if you look after a county project, which I'll explain, the land bridge was removed to open up that, what historically was a connection on the side of the island. Also, as part of the project that I'll be discussing, there were some breaches to the island dike, which opened up circulation as part of the overall project. Back in two thousand and ten, just a little history on timeline, the St. Christopher Harbor Homeowners Association approached the county and proposed that they would explain, they were applying for environmental permits to remove that land bridge and restore it so that they could, for the purpose of having navigable passage back through that channel cut. And in two thousand and ten, they came forward, and the county approved or accepted their proposal, since the land bridge was part of the county's ownership at that time. Two thousand and fourteen, the association came back to the county, requesting that the county be more involved with the implementation and funding for the project, and at that time, the county and also the Florida Inland Navigation District became partners in the project, where the county applied for a fine grant for part of the funding for the land bridge removal. The county and the fine, fine got involved because of some of the public benefits beyond just the benefits to the private association, such as the establishment of a shorter boat route would provide less impacts to seagrasses on a longer route out to the channel. Part of the project was the improved water circulation. Also, part of the project was eradication of Brazilian pepper, of the nuisance exotics on the perimeter dike of the island. And along the way, dating back up to December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, the county entered a formal agreement with the St. Christopher Harbor Association called the Agreement for Dredging and Improvement of Green Salt Marsh Conservation Area. And under that agreement, essentially, the county paid for the project, which, using two consultants after a process, total project cost was, or county payment was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, which the county paid for upfront, including its agreed-to share of eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and nine. That's accounting for about thirty-five thousand we got from fine for the project. And under the agreement, the association was to pay back the county forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. That's beyond the money they had spent already on the permitting and design of the project, which was estimated, as reported during the process, about thirty-eight thousand.
Roland, if I may, on that one, you have the amount that the Property Owners Association paid before we really got involved with that thirty-eight thousand.
Right.
What's, what's your estimate of the county time involved in this project, which I'm guessing is not included in the eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and nine share? I mean, it seems to me this was a long, involved process, used a lot of staff time. It seemed to me it might come close to this thirty-eight thousand. I just want to get the county's share on the record, because it's not a de minimis amount, and if we're gonna include the amount that they paid prior to us getting involved, I think we ought to have a number down for us.
That's a good point. We really haven't tallied the staff time. It's, it was quite a bit of time over the years. I mean, this has been a multi-year project, and there's been various.
Okay, I may, I'm probably wrong on this, but in my head, I'm going, go forward with the idea that we spent at least as much time as St. Christopher's did beforehand of that thirty-eight thousand, and it's probably a low figure. Thank you.
Under the agreement, the forty-five thousand rounded amount was due twelve months after the association exited the agreement, which it did execute on March twenty-nine, two thousand and seventeen. Well, two thousand and sixteen's when they executed it, and part of the delay from when the agreement went to the board in fifteen and when it was executed in March two thousand and sixteen, was based on the association wanted to verify that Amicore and DEP accepted the project as completed before they signed it, which, that's how it went. So, one year after it was executed, which was March two thousand and seventeen, staff notified the association that the forty-five thousand plus was now due. At that time, however, the association representatives advised staff that they didn't, their position was that the project wasn't completed to the full extent of the terms and conditions of the agreement, and therefore, they have not submitted the payment. Particularly, as staff understands, the position is, although the land bridge itself was excavated and removed to a navigable depth, the channel depths adjacent to the land bridge removal were not dredged or maintenance dredged such that it remained shallow, impeding boater And in discussions on this matter, the association points the whereas clause in the agreement, and I've quoted it or written it here on the overhead, essentially, one of the whereas agreements indicated that the purpose of the agreement was to restore a navigable channel for boater access east of Head Island to benefit the homeowners of the subdivision. And again, during discussions, the, the association offered to pay thirty thousand of the forty-five as payment in full, based on their position that while the county did proceed and implement the project and remove the land bridge, the county did not restore the navigable access, which they indicate that the, was part of the intent of the agreement. Staff's position on this is, the project was completed as permitted. Just to point out that it was the association that actually obtained the permits, and the permits were issued in the association's name, and the county became involved in the grant application and implementation. We took those permits and coordinated with the DEP and Amicore and implemented them. And as I indicated earlier, both Amicore and DEP, the state, have signed off as it was completed as permitted. The other thing we did along the way was just to verify, we reconfirmed through our, obtained some water depth soundings through our pro bono project engineer for the project, Scott McGuire, and he did, I'll show you on a map briefly, but essentially, just reconfirmed that the water depths where the land bridge were removed were removed and excavated as The other point, staff's position is, the project was implemented as it was permitted, which didn't include maintenance dredging or dredging of the channel beyond the land bridge, and therefore, it was, that was essentially the scope of the agreement, and dredging would have been beyond that scope. Here's the aerial of the soundings that were taken. It pretty much does reflect that the area where the bridge was removed, it's at a navigable depth, but it also shows, if you look to the, kind of the north or to the upper right, it goes down to two point one, so it kind of verifies what we know, is that the area that was excavated was excavated to a navigable depth, but the channel does in fact get shallow once you move to the north of the excavation. of the excavated area. Essentially, that's really the main issue, is the, from staff perspective, the association was looking at this as their overall goal was just to make this a fully navigable channel at low tide as well as high tide for various draft boats. And in the end, the reason was while it's navigable for smaller boats or for shallow boats at certain times, other times, it's hard to navigate. And they're... Unfortunately, it didn't meet that full expectation of the overall project. The alternatives that staff looked at in addressing this issue, one alternative is to accept the association's offer of the $30,000 as full payment, since while the project was completed, full navigation has not been restored from the association's perspective. Another alternative is just to reject the offer of payment less than the amount due and direct staff to initiate legal action as the default of the agreement. A third alternative that was looked at and was discussed with the association was the possibility that staff would support an escrowing of some of the funds that we received from the association whereby they could pursue permitting through the state and Amicore to do some maintenance dredging of the channel outside of land bridge removal. And if they were successful in getting those permits and carrying it out, that possibly the county would consider some of the funds they paid towards that project. Under that, association representative did say they researched it. We're talking about a price range, just for research purposes, around $10,000. When they reached out to contractors and looked into it, they just didn't, weren't able to find any contractors that would do the work within the amount that was being contemplated, so that hadn't moved force at this point. In the end, staff's position, again, since we understand two points, that there are some shallow areas in the channel outside of land bridge removal, but again, staff's position is that was beyond the scope of the project. And the other point is, we also understand that from a practical standpoint, enforcing legal, in taking legal action to collect the full $45 versus getting $30, the cost might be more than the difference, but nevertheless, our position is that the project was completed per the agreement, and the full amount is due and should be expected to be received from the association. And that's our presentation. I believe there are representatives from the association here for their...
Commissioners, any questions for staff at this point? Commissioner Slaughter.
Stan, I seem to remember that when this came before the board, the board had agreed to pay a certain amount. Is that true?
Yes, I think that there, we've, this project was, came before the board in a few steps, and I think you're recalling some of those.
But I mean, when we finally agreed, I thought we agreed to spend X amount of dollars on it.
The written agreement, that's really under discussion, that was really the final, up the ante in terms of the amount of county participation.
But we said we'd spend X amount of dollars. Did we spend X amount of dollars?
Yes, and one of the slides again summarized that, but essentially, the amount of the total project that the county expended was $159,770. Under the agreement, once all the dust cleared and everybody paid their share, the county's share would have been around $88,000.
Correct, but how much did, when it came before the board of county commissioners, how much did we indicate we were authorized and to spend as our share of the project?
I think that's what's reflected in the agreement, that number.
And we spent it. My point is, it's not that we said, okay, we'll do this project, the St. Christopher's share is this share, and we did it cheaper and save money or anything like that. We spent every dollar we authorized, every dollar that both parties thought we were going to be spending at that time on the project to do the project, and then it was done according to the way the permit said it was supposed to be done.
That's correct.
So, I'm just...
You're correct.
We haven't shorted anything.
That's correct.
We haven't saved any money by not doing anything. So, it seems to me, initially at least, that, you know, some parties thought that, ah, maybe something more should have been done, which was never explicitly discussed, and it's not the case that we save money on some area by doing in any way less than might have been anticipated.
That's correct. And as Roland had mentioned, the agreement was actually done, entered, signed after the permitting agencies had signed off on it.
Okay, and the other part, just more historically, is I remember when this first came before us, it was closer to a 50-50 split that we were talking about, and the county's share over time just sort of went up and up and up, and St. Christopher's share got less and less, basically. And what turned out, what started as a 50-50 share now looks like it's more like a two-to-one share.
All right, let me just add to that.
Okay.
Briefly, is we ended up with two contractors working on this. The first contractor approached it with a dredge and barge, ran into issues because of their intended disposal was going to be on the dykes versus hauling it off. That became an issue because the jurisdictional agencies concluded that the dykes were not acceptable for receiving of the dredge material, so it ran into some price issues. Ended up paying that contractor for work completed and then hiring a new contractor where the excavation removal was by land versus by barge, by small machinery through the subdivision. So, there was some changes to the construction procedure during the way, which led to some of the multiple appearances before this board and the different discussions and the different costs that adjusted as the agreement went. But once the agreement was entered into, that was at a point where we had gone through that process, we had established the prices, and that's what's reflected in the agreement.
Thanks, and I'll just note that from the pictures, it looks like a great job was done, in that it's basically ready to do just what I think the board expected and approved at that time. So, thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Any other commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Good morning, welcome. We could have your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anna Garamone. 2136 Harbor Lane, Bureau Beach, Florida 32963. I am in the St. Christopher subdivision that we're talking about. I am the vice president now of the HOA. I have come before you, I think as many of you do recall, when we started this, so I'm back. And what I'd like to do is just go through and just point out to you what our position is as far as, you know, the job that was done and the payment and everything that's transpired. So, as Roland said, in December of 2015, I'm sorry, hold on one sec. Can I just pass these out?
Certainly.
So that you guys can look through them. Just come up there.
You can just give it to Commissioner Fletcher, he'll pass them down.
So, we as an HOA entered into a contract with the county, as Roland said, on December 15, 2015, after multiple, you know, meetings to discuss the situation with Head Island and the plug. Contract is known as the Agreement for Dredging and Improvement of Green Salt Marsh Conservation Area, also known as Head Island. So, I'm here today to just clarify the HOA's position regarding the final payment, specifically in the handouts I just gave you. If I can point your attention to paragraph four, which is highlighted. Whereas the land bridge impedes historical flow of tidal flushing between Head Island and St. Christopher Harbor, resulting in reduced water quality and prevents any boating access in the lagoon to the north or south between Head Island and St. Christopher Harbor. That situation continues today. Nothing's changed. So, I just want to be clear on that. So, that's number one. Any boat travel to the north is not happening. Let me also draw your attention to paragraph five, which states, whereas the association has offered to enter into this agreement with the county for the dredging and removal of the land bridge to restore tidal flow and to restore a navigable channel for boating access east of Head Island to benefit the homeowners of the subdivision. Again, as stated in the contract, the removal of the land bridge was to result in the restoration of tidal flow and to restore a navigable channel for boating access. Today, as I stand here before you, there is no navigable channel, and there is no benefit to the homeowners after all this work. Let me go to paragraph six. Whereas the removal of the land bridge also benefits the general public by providing more direct water, more direct boater access to deep water channels in the area, thus reducing potential boating impacts to the seagrasses in the shallow flats that are in the path of current boater access. If you recall, one of the things that we did talk about when we were, you know, starting all this was the damage to the seagrass to our south, which was the only way out. And they were getting torn up, and, you know, that was a concern. Paragraph six states that it would reduce, this, this job would reduce the potential boating impacts to seagrasses in the shallow flats. I'm here to tell you that that has not changed. We all use the flats still because we cannot use anything to the north. We cannot get out. It's ankle-deep. Doesn't matter, low tide, it doesn't matter. We can't get out. It, that's, that's the situation today. I also want to point out that there was, as Roland stated, we had rebid the project because the barge wasn't happening, and they brought in another contractor. When that was done, as he stated, we did apply for a fine grant and got some money from them. I'm just going to quote here that the proposed project in the additional bid, and I didn't, let me, hang on one sec, let me give you this. This is the third page of the... This is the third page when we had changed the bid over to the new people. Not just the third page, I highlighted the last paragraph, because I think it's important to point out that... So, the whole premise here was for this project to result in boating improvements. And the county's Florida Boating Improvement Fund was previously identified as the county's appropriate funding source to help pay for this. The Boating Improvement Fund, as it states in that last paragraph, is still appropriate as a funding source. The match, it was $119,000 with a cost-share match, which was utilized as monies. The money was given since the proposed project would result in boating improvements. That's what the Boating Improvement Fund is for, boating improvements. We in St. Christopher and any boaters coming through there have seen zero boating improvements. Nothing's changed. So, I just wanted to point that one out as well. So, St. Christopher's position in taking on this Head Island project way back when, which if we go way back, we're talking 10 years, if not more, all of this was hinged on getting a navigable channel. That's what it was, removing the plug so we can get out, you know, and not rip up the flats and all that. So, that was the main reason for us as an HOA to even initiate and pursue and spend, when it's all said and done, we're probably going to be in it for, you know, $75,000 to $80,000. We're a small 14-lot subdivision. We're 14 homeowners, you know, that are spending enormous amounts of money, not only to benefit us, but to benefit, you know, the sea grass and to benefit other boaters that come through. So, as a result, that's where we're going to be at if and when this ever ends. Those of you who were present during our meetings did hear me loud and clear that boating access was the basis of our presentation. And I'm sure if you go back and read the minutes, that will reflect, that will be reflected in the minutes. That was the discussion. As a result, the specific wording was in fact, that specific wording was in fact put into the contract, as I just read to you. You know, the county prepared the contract, brought it to us, put it before the HOA, we agreed. We didn't get lawyers, we didn't start changing stuff, we didn't say anything. We said fine. The whole premise of this contract was hinging on boating access and freeing up the seagrass. You know, and again, the monies for the, from the fine grant was for boating improvement. I mean, I just got to reiterate that point. So, I'm sure you can all agree that we can see that there's been a lot of boating language in the contract between us and the county, because this is all, we're going by this contract. I mean, it was signed, it was agreed to, and, you know, we were under the assumption that, you know, we were going to get what we paid for. None of what I've just detailed to you has happened. So, I guess today, I'm going to tell you the shallowst part of the channel is ankle-deep. You can't get out. I go out on my kayak, and I got to push to get through. You know, the boat travel is not happening to the north. It continues, nothing's changed. We're still going out by the flats, and they're getting ripped up. Like I said, we have an 11-inch boat draft, we have an 11-inch draft on our boat, and we can't get through. So, you know, it, this is not, you know, I mean, this is a fact. It's just not happening. Our HOA did agree to go into this contract with the county. We did agree to expend an additional $45,884.71, based on the very clear results, which you guys outlined in the contract that you presented us, and we both signed. That hasn't happened to date. My question would be, why else would we take this on if we're not going to get what we're going to pay for? The language is in the contract. Those were and still are our expectations. We are, you know, very disappointed. The association and the homeowners are not happy with me, number one. So, you know, try being, you know, neighbors with those people. It's been a tough, tough road. So, you know, I'm just coming here before you because to date, we have not gotten any of what the county, you know, told us that they were going to provide when the scope of the work was completed. So, again, you know, I'm going to ask, you know, what are we paying for? Because, you know, I need, I don't know. You know, I don't know what we're paying for. So, you know, if somebody can clarify that, I'd appreciate it, but the boating access, the boating improvements, not ripping up the seagrass, it's just not happening. It's not there. This, this whole thing was about the removal of the land bridge in conjunction with restoring a navigable channel in order to save the seagrass. So, I took the liberty of Googling "navigable," you know, I Googled it. And the definition is, from the dictionary definition of navigable is, of a waterway or sea able to be sailed on by ships or boats. Yeah, we can't do that. Then I Googled "channel," because I figured, let me see what, you know, channel. The definition of "channel" is a passage for water or other liquids to flow along, or a part of a river or other area of water that is deep and wide enough to provide a route for ships to travel along. Yeah, not happening. We don't have that either. Then I said, you know, let me Google the depth of a channel. What does that mean? You know, because I'm a city girl from New York, I don't know these things. So, I Googled it. Normal depth, and the depth of a channel, when I Googled it, it says, "The normal depth is the depth of flow in a channel or culvert when the slope of the water surface and channel bottom is the same and the water depth remains constant." That does not happen. It just, it gets shallow. It just doesn't happen. So, you know, I'm... Again, I want to reiterate that this contract was drawn up by the county, your words, based on our meetings, and that's the reason why I'm here today. That is the reason why final payment has not been issued. You know, what we signed up for has not been delivered. I also want to point you to page three of the contract and number seven, titled "Default." And it states in the contract, which the county drew up and we both signed, that each of the following shall constitute an event of default. The failure by either party to make payments when due... The failure by either party to make payments when due and the failure, B, the failure by either party to comply with any other material provision of this agreement. I maintain to you that the material provision in this agreement was to restore, as it says in paragraph five, a navigable channel for boater access and also to provide more boater access to deep water channels in the area. Neither one of those material provisions, provisions have been met by the scope of the work that was done. The county has not met its contractual obligations within the agreement with St. Christopher Harbor, nor have we seen any boating benefit after all this work. Nothing has changed. The reason why we are here, and I'll ask again, you know, what exactly is it that we're paying for? Because I got to go back to my homeowners and explain to them why we're dishing out another $45,000. You know, there's no boating benefit, there's no navigable channel, there's no access to deep water. It's just not there. I would invite any and all of you to come and we'll take a ride on the boat, anytime of day, any day of the week, so that you can experience it yourself. You know, the issues are what they are. It is, this is where we find ourselves today. And, you know, I would just ask you to, you know, consider what I'm saying because, you know, there is a contract and words mean things. And, you know, it's really a little disheartening that, you know, I've got to come over here and do this again because, you know, what we're asking to pay for has not been accomplished. And that's it. I just thank you for your time.
So, Mrs. Garmon, a few things. One is, when you were doing all your Googling, did you happen to Google the word "restore"?
I did not Google the word "restore," but I...
So, "restore" would imply that there'd be an existing navigable channel, and I don't believe there's ever been an existing navigable channel in that area. You can look at the aerials and I think you can go back in time and you'll see that it's always been shallow. There's never been a channel dredged there, so there is no channel to restore. So, that's, when you say words mean something, the word "restore" means something to me and there is no channel to restore. Secondly, you all came to us and you said, "Hey, we have this access problem. We've obtained a permit and we want the county to help us do the work in the permit that we have received." And that's why we got involved. And we did the work exactly according to the permit that you all got. Okay? Now, whether your owners expected more, I don't know. If you wanted a channel dredged through there, you should have put it in the permit. But we did exactly what you asked us when you came to us and said, "We got this permit. Would you please help us do the work?" And so, that's, that's what we've done and that's my position. If you all had other expectations, I'm sorry. But to dredge a channel in that area for what you want would probably be a million-dollar project because there is no existing channel for maintenance dredging. That would be going through seagrasses, you'd have to mitigate that, even if you got a permit, I doubt you could. And in the backup, it says you all tried to find somebody to do that dredging and you couldn't. And there's a reason why because it would be exorbitantly expensive. So, you know, again, I'm sorry that if the expectation the homeowners aren't met, but you came to us with a permit in hand and said, "We want you to help implement this work in the permit." And that's what we've done.
And then we, you drew up this contract...
And again...
Which is, I'm sorry...
Okay, so the word "restore"...
Which is very clear.
You, you show me where there is an existing dredged channel to be restored.
Says to restore a navigable channel. Hold on. That channel that we're talking about has muck from the plug. That's what's all under there. There's no seagrass under there, there's nothing. And probably at this point in time, it'd be better for Ralph, the president of the HOA, who's more knowledgeable about boating and all this, you know, technical stuff than I am, to really respond to any specific questions in that realm because I'm not, you know, pretending to know, but from my understanding...
Miss Garmon, if I can just ask, is, is it your position that the lands and the permits that were pulled were not, were not met that...
This is not about the permits or, it's not about the Army Corps of Engineers, it's not about the EPA permits. This is about a contract, separate and independent, that St. Christopher HOA entered into with the county, who the county wrote up, and these are the words that, you know, the county put in here. And when I read through it, I'm sure you can agree that navigable channel, deep water channels, not ripping through the seagrasses, I mean, it's all in here. And all of that has not occurred. So, again, I'm, you know, I, I don't, you know, we're not looking here to, you know, have a channel out to the moorings. We're just looking for that certain area that has been dredged up with muck from Head Island for 50 years, 65 years, to, you know, get us to be able to go out. It's a small little area where we're talking about, ankle deep. It's not, you know, a, you know, half a mile long thing. But, you know, I'm sorry, words mean things. We have a contract. And that's my position. That's not, you know...
And that's fine.
Mr. Chair.
Who applied for the permits to do the work?
St. Christopher's HOA. About how long ago, Ralph?
Was the, did the permits include the depth at which...
I'm not a technical person, so I'm not, you know, I know that we were...
But the permits were wholly within the control of St. Christopher's homeowners association?
Until we came before the county and they agreed to take over the project. Because my, my position was, when I came in here, is we're done.
Using the permits that you guys had already acquired?
Yeah, we said, "We have the permits and we want to, you know, give it to you because you own Head Island."
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at paragraph five there and what I see is, it says, "The association has offered to enter into this agreement with the county for the dredging and removal of the land bridge." That's it. For the dredging and removal of the land bridge. It didn't, didn't imply that we're dredging a channel in addition to the land bridge. That's all talking about the removal of the land bridge. And that was done.
To restore...
To restore tidal flow...
Title flow and restore a navigable channel. Does the rest of that, as it relates to...
And I think that what's envisioned there is the land bridge is the impediment to the tidal flow, which I think has, has, has been addressed without doubt. And it was, I guess, the assumption that that would, that would restore access to a navigable, navigable channel through there. And at the end of the day, we can't go and start dredging where it hasn't been permitted. I don't think the, the regulating authorities would see too kindly to us just, just running on and, and creating some new channel that wasn't permitted. We took the permit that was done by the St. Christopher's HOA and completed that work. And I have to, I, I understand you're having to explain your expenditure to the rest of the members of your neighborhood. I'm concerned about explaining the county's expenditure to the county taxpayer. We've spent $88,000 plus staff time, as Commissioner Solari has alluded to, on this project and it's sounding more and more like a special project to benefit 14 homeowners. And if that's what it is, we shouldn't be spending any taxpayer dollars on it. So, we, I, I'm really reluctant for, for the county to move forward with spending an additional $15,000 on, on something that seems to be more about the benefit of, of folks in, in one neighborhood. We need a public purpose here.
There are two other neighborhoods there as well that come through, which is Oyster Bay and Seminole Shores. But I'm going to let Ralph Shepherd, the president of the HOA, address, you know, these questions because, again, he's more, you know, knowledgeable in that area.
Good morning. Welcome. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Ralph Shepherd, 2096 Harbor Lane, also in St. Christopher Harbor. I sat and listened and pretty much covered all the points on what I would say would be legal grounds, speaking specifically to the contract. Just a little on my background. I have been involved with this effort through Pete Tyson, who started this. Peter is a local insurance agent here in the community, has lived here for a very long time and is our neighbor. And Pete holds a degree in biology. I have a bachelor's science in agriculture, a minor in environmental engineering, and 35 years of commercial real estate development. As Anna pointed out, and with all due respect, this staff has been nothing but elegant. The commission was great in taking this on and, and, and supporting this effort because it's a, it's an effort for the entire community and it's an important effort. I've been fishing in Florida since I was old enough to drag a boat into a river. I've had my house here in Vero Beach for 12 years. I'm a permanent resident here. And some of the salient points, which have not been covered. The work on this, and as Mrs. Solari very accurately pointed out, staff put a lot of work into this. So did our little volunteer army. We tried to get Oyster Bay involved. We tried to get Seminole involved. They all have docks, they all have boats. We went around door to door and we got zero. Pete, who has probably been in that neighborhood the longest, was hell-bent on getting this done. He said, "Look, the county put this plug in. They need to take it out." He talked to Mesquite Control and they said, "We don't use it anymore. We have no need for it. We don't access that island." Again, to negotiate against ourselves, we have no gripe at all. Yes, the scope of the permit that was pulled has been accomplished. There is no argument with that. The terms of that contract have not been met. And that contract was prepared by the county and delivered to us, by the county. We signed it. We do answer to our 14 homeowners because we're the ones who put the money up. It's just that simple. We are not a 720 HOA, by the way. We are a volunteer HOA. So, if you want to know what pulling teeth is, other than talking to my very good friend, Dr. Ray, this is like pulling teeth because it's a very difficult process all the way along. The intention of, our intention as a homeowners' association was to get navigation out to that channel. When we did the research on it, and this is all in the documents that supported the permit, I was involved in, in fact, my civil engineer sealed that permit because the gentleman who was a lot less expensive, was out of Texas, couldn't seal the permit when push came to shove, when we pulled it. I've dealt with the Army Corps of Engineer on many occasions. I've put in bridges, I've put in seawalls, I've done a lot of land development. I also know Scott McGuire real well and I talked to Scott. He said it would cost about 50 grand to finish this. We were hoping, Roland mentioned 10, we threw out 10, 15. I brought in Summerlin, just a friend of ours from Summerlin, Murray, and he goes, 25 easily. Scott, last Friday told me, you'd be standing, you'd be clicking your heels if you get it done for 50. We love specific performance. We're not coming asking for another 50 grand from the county. We'd love to see it get done, not just for our benefit, but for the benefit of the whole community. I live on that point in a very old home. People come in and fish there on a constant basis. Part of this project, by the way, on the original scope, was to also create a landing on the outside of Head Island, like you've done on other county-owned properties, so that boats could come up there, use it recreationally. None of that was done either. The research on the grass, to be more specific, was done, again, a lot of volunteer work. Pete Tyson, who is a very active member of the Smithsonian down in Fort Pierce, was able to get a lot of volunteers doing the, everything that was required, which was a very extensive seagrass survey, soundings. There is no seagrass, and a pipe was set, by the way. A pipe was set, I'm going to call it 150 yards, could be 125. We haven't gone out with a tape measure to measure it. With DEP in the boat and the Manatee people in the boat, they were using our boats, my boat, Pete's boat, because we put an inordinate amount of volunteer time into this as well. They set a pipe, inside of which was biomass. The biomass has resulted from the tidal flow being clogged for 50 years, in addition to the decomposition of all the leaves and all the debris that flowed in there because anytime you get a north wind, a west wind, or a southwest wind, it blows into there and stops when there's a plug in there. All that has nowhere to go. There is no current because it was plugged. So, that all decomposed and all those soundings were taken, all that soil was sampled. There is no seagrass there. It is biomass and it is an absolutely a direct result of that plug being in there for 50 years. That said, when the original contractor showed up with his barge and his traco on the barge, which was the right way to do this project, I went over and talked to him as soon as he showed up. And I, and I wasn't president of the HOA at the time. I was just interested. Pete was interested, he was traveling. Went over and talked to him. I said, "How are you going to get in here?" He goes, "I'm going to dig my way in." He goes, "I'm allowed to dig from that pipe in." I go, "You're going to make it deep enough so that, you know, we've got a way to get out with the boat?" He goes, "If I can get in with my barge, you'll get in with your boat. It'll be two to three feet deep at low tide." I said, "Perfect. That'll, that'll do it." And he had to dig his way in. There was no other way in. On top of that, what's not in your soundings is it wasn't part of the plug, just east of where the plug was. That is the other side of the channel that was there. You know, and you pointed out, there was no historic channel. I've seen all of the pictures as well and I've seen the aerials as far back. Staff was, was, again, generous enough to share all that. The channel was just like it would be between any of these, you know, previously existing islands. It had washed out through tidal flow and the water was, the water on the east side of the plug is five feet deep, almost six feet deep. Low tide, it's four and a half feet deep there, five feet deep. And it's shallowest. I would suggest it was very similar to that on the other side of where the plug was put in. The material that's in there is not anything but dirt that was brought in for the plug and biomass from decomposed leaf and organic debris. And that needed to be removed and should have been removed as part of the restoration. It wasn't, and I understand why. Because when the contractor wanted to bail on the project because he couldn't dump his dirt where he thought he could, a very smart contractor who came up and bid it, he moved his dirt on land through our roads and went a half a mile down the block in front of Round Island onto private property, who's accepting clean fill and dumped it for free. So, he did very, very well and the contractor on the barge should have done the same, but chose not to. We were long out of the process at that point. In addition to that, because had we been involved in the process, we would have, we would have found a way for that guy to dump that dirt and truck it a half a mile down the block and get rid of it. He didn't even know that existed. He just bailed on it. We were, we had already assigned our rights. 35 years of the contract, as a contractor. I don't know that I've ever gone through a project and not had to either augment a permit, pull other permits, modify a permit. We would have done that. We, as a community, if I was involved in this, if Pete Tyson was involved in this, we had one goal, which is to get us three feet of water at low tide, get rid of that biomass. We didn't want to dredge a channel. There's no million dollars, you know, contemplated here. There was, there's a natural lake that exists out there that has grass and has a natural grass bed. We just wanted to get back to that natural lake. The rest is up to us. We didn't want to connect it to the, to the moorings, which is where the next channel starts. We simply wanted to get it back to its natural and original condition, the best we could tell. And all of our soil surveys and all of our grass surveys and DEP and the Manatee people and everyone else, because there were a lot of agencies involved, all finally agreed on that and were understanding of that. So, if the permit itself needed to be modified, we would have modified it if we were doing the project. We weren't, the county was. We were, we went to our homeowners with that contract, not with the permit, because that was when we had to write the check. And we went to our homeowners with a contract and they said, "Well, the contract's clear on its face. The county gave us the contract. We're nothing but grateful to the county for getting involved and we expect this will go well. We expected it to be done, as Anna has said." And I can't belabor the point any more than that, other than to say that nobody wins in this situation. We get that, you know, we, has there been benefit? Absolutely. We now have tidal flow. The water's clearer. There has definitely been benefit from pulling that plug out, rightfully so. We didn't put the plug in. The county put the plug in. We're involved strictly because we care and we live there. The other communities that benefit directly, they didn't want to get involved. They either don't care or figure they could go along for the ride because all of them turned us down. The other communities that benefit directly, they didn't want to get involved. They either don't care or figure they could go along for the ride, because all of them turned us down. At the end of the day, the $30,000, which we had to have, of course, a meeting to discuss, we tendered the 30,000 figuring, "Look, nobody's going to be happy. We're not going to get it done for the 15." Scott McGuire told me 50. He, he's probably the consummate expert on this. If you went and got Wilco, if you could get him to do it, and I do think you could get a permit to dig out that biomass, I would have modified the permit we had in hand. That would have been the course of least resistance. Didn't get the opportunity to do that. Clearly, there was a misunderstanding and possibly bad communication, to the extent that that contract was given to us. Don't know if that was presented or how that contract flowed from the commission to staff to us. The contract's clear on its face, crystal clear. I understand your point and, and the point that Mr. Brown made as well. I, you can read it however you choose to read it, but there's an abundance of information that seems to speak to navigation and restoring that channel. And when you say restoring the channel, no, even if it didn't exist as a channel, clearly the biomass in there needed to be removed. And it wasn't. And so no one is going to come away from this happy. I mean, I said, "We're not even a 720 HOA." If I take $45,000 and spend it on lawyers, that'll go away before they even open the file. You know, it'll take that to, you know, to open a file. At that point, we have to go back to our community for legal fees, and guess what? We can't lean their properties. We can't assess them for this. We have no lien rights. We're an LLC with a set of bylaws and, and doing the best we can, and we come with our hat in our hand. But we'd like a favorable solution. We'd like you would at least not rule against us on its face and maybe spend a little more time looking back and understanding what, you know, what we came away from that contract with. And that's in view of the fact that we understand clairvoyantly what the commission's position is, and we're not arguing it.
So, having been involved in all this, again, I go back to the point that you all came to us with this permit and said, "This is going to restore the navigation for us." And, and we had multiple discussions on this. We talked about the, the budget dollars repeatedly and over and over and over. And never, in those conversations, was it brought up in, "Oh, by the way, we want you to pick up an extra 50,000 to dredge out here." Never was that said. And for you to assume that we would just say, "Oh, yeah, we'll be glad to throw an extra 50,000 at this," after we'd already, as Commissioner Solari pointed out, had, have repeatedly upped our ante in this project, never was it mentioned, "And we want you to do this additional dredging." Never. Okay, so-
We didn't view it as additional dredging. We viewed it as part of the project.
Then why wasn't it in your, why wasn't it in your permit then?
Again, the permit-
You gave a lot of qualifications that you, you should have known that any dredging would require to be permitted.
No, that, that was part of the removal of the land plug, and that biomass would have come out-
The land plug is defined-
The contractor told me he had the right to dig in. He told me he was coming in. He had no other way. He had to dig in or dig out. He couldn't get in or out through that without putting his bucket in. And he had every intention to do that, and he told me he had every intention. He told me he was going to come in through that opening and from that pipe in, he had every right to dig in. If the Army Corps wanted some clarification or additional drawings, or if any of the agencies wanted additional information at that time, that was the time that, again, I've never been through a project where I didn't have to augment, explain, have second meetings, modify, whatever would have been required, if it was required, and I'm not certain it was, we would have done it. At that time, that was the only window of opportunity. I can't argue with what you're saying. Because on its face, to dig out that plug, it's a moving target. Those things aren't, you know, delineated and, and itemized in such a way that it's crystal clear. And the whole thing being a restoration, I would have suggested that that would have come out, and I would have at least made the attempt to get them to dig it out.
I think, looking at the aerials, it's pretty clear the footprint of the plug, and that has been removed. To imply that that plug goes another 100, 150 yards i- is, is not reasonable. So I can look at the aerials. I can see the footprint of the plug. The plug is gone. We did what was permitted, and that's going to be my position on this.
We don't argue with that.
So.
We have no argument to that.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Is there anyone else from the public wishes to speak to this? Okay, Commissioners, you're-
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Solari.
This is one of those no-win situations, and I'm really happy to say that I voted against this from the start. And, but the reasoning, I think, is important, and, and part of it is because there was not really clarity on the public purpose. And I think that is what, at the end of the day, is causing the problem. The fact that there were some ideas of a public purpose, which would include the water flow and protecting the seagrasses, but there was another small group that had a very private purpose, and that was the navigable, navigable channels for their boats. And so, you know, I think that the county was right when it said it started with a purpose, a permit that they were received from the homeowners' association. And it specified something very specific, which was the land bridge. And if you read paragraphs four, five, and six with that in mind, then the, the words that follow the land bridge are just sort of descriptive, particularly the idea of the removal of the land bridge to restore tidal flow and restore navigable channel. That would be the purpose of removing the land bridge. Whether that would actually do what you hoped it to do was a different matter. But what the county certainly understood at the time was that we've got a, a project, the scope of which is defined by the permit, at a certain cost, and this is what the county did. But again, this was a project which took years to move through the process, and it, this, the, the county contract ends up going to people in the homeowners' association, and they're not focused on the permit. Most of them probably never read it. And they're not focused on the, they weren't all here before us when we went over all this. So they're not privy to that. They're looking at the words of the contract, and they've got boats. So they're probably not even focused on the land bridge so much as the, ah, access to deepwater channels, or the idea that they're going to have a navigable channel. So their whole mind is focused on this. And so where we are now is, I think we're at the place where the county has a very defensible position. And I think that we might, or probably would prevail in court. And, but I don't think that we'd come out, even if we did, given the legal fees. And, you know, while sometimes I might want to go to court just to establish a, a clear reasoning and say that, "No, the county's right. Clearly right, and so we need to let the world know that we're right and we're going to defend our position." I think that the ambiguities are such here that this might not be the one I'd like to go there on. So I, I certainly don't want the county to spend any more money on it. I, I think that it would be right for the county to get the full $45,000, but I don't think we're going to get the full $45,000 without the lawsuit, which I don't think is going to benefit anybody with the lawyers at the end of the day. So I, I'd be happy to hear from my fellow commissioners, but right now I'm leaning on accepting the offer of $30,000 as full payment for the agreement, saying everything's done, and, and move on to other county matters.
Is that as a motion?
No, I said I want to hear from my other fellow commissioners first. I, I may be something I missed. And I, I'd be happy if I don't hear from anybody else to make that in the form of a motion, but right now I just, I may have missed something, and so I, that's just the way I see things right now, and I'm always happy to, to learn from my fellow commissioners. They may show, show light on things which I've missed up until this point.
Well, I know where I stand is I'd, I'd be opposed to that, because if we take less than the 45, that means taxpayers have to pick up that 15,000 shortfall. So the county would be putting more funds into this project.
And I agree with that, except that we have on the other side the idea of what, what different parties' actual understanding was that it was going to get done. I think what we have a project which, the mistake was that one way or the other was going to cost a lot more than we originally understood. And so, you know, we got the county benefits for the money we spent, which was the tidal flow and the, well, not, no, we don't all of them, because we didn't get the protection of seagrasses, but the, the county's benefits weren't so much in the navigable channel, as I see it. So, and again, I'm, I-
Well, Commissioner, where I would be as far as trying to come to a solution is, I know staff is opposed to the escrow option because of the uncertainty of the timing, but I'd be willing to go with the escrow option with a time certain on the escrow, say, a year. And that if they do not use that towards the additional dredging they want, then that 15,000 would, would revert to the county. So that there would be a finality to it, not just open-ended. But other than that, I, I'm not supportive of just accepting less than the full amount. Is Commissioner, is there anything?
And, and that's where I am too. I, I appreciate your recent input on it. I don't believe that we should place the taxpayers on the hook for the remaining $15,000. So the escrow, although it's concerning, is probably the best option at this point. I wanted to ask Ms. Caramone something there. She mentioned earlier that she has an 11 and a half inch draft vessel that can't go through, but she can get the kayak through if she really tries. Kayak has like two inches.
Well, we have an 11-inch, we purposely bought an 11-inch draft, knowing that the seagrasses-
And what's the beam and length of the vessel?
It's a 20, what is it, 25, 24?
A 24-foot vessel? And so your expectation was to be able to get that, your expectation-
It's a low draft boat. That, yeah, that was the purpose of us buying it, was to be able to get through shallow waters.
And basically, all of the people that live in your community are boat owners?
Um-
For, by and large?
By, by, yeah, the majority, yeah, sure.
And, and how, how, what type of vessel do you own?
Oh, I have a 23-
You need to go to the microphone if you're gonna respond.
I have a 23-foot vessel. Probably has a draft of 18 inches, 17 inches.
18 inches?
17, you know, yeah, in there.
And the beam is eight?
Eight feet.
Eight feet. So, so your, your expectation, anticipation was to be able to just travel through there?
No, we would, again, that, that wasn't the expectation specifically, but yes, indirectly, had the project been done the way we thought it was going to be accomplished, we would have been able to putt-putt out of there, as opposed to putt-putting around through the seagrasses, which are more valuable than what is out on the other side.
But the permit does not allow for that?
Well, again, the restoration would have a con-
Your expectation was beyond the scope of the permit. And, and it would be nice, again, you're in real estate. It would have raised the value of your property to have a navigable waterway coming right through as well, probably?
Not necessarily, but it certainly would have been a, a byproduct of it. I mean, I would have to admit to that as well, sure.
Want to be considered, and then you would want to bring it-
Well, I think, you know, I think we need to also keep in mind that the initial dredging entailed the utilization of a barge that would have solved what we're talking about right now.
Right.
I mean, so, you know, and again, like Ralph said, you know, when you do a project, things change, and, you know, it just happens. And unfortunately, you know, that didn't result in our ability to, you know, go out to the north rather than to the south by, by changing the contractor.
You're boat owners. What, what's the largest boat in your community? Would, would you think? What vessel?
Jamie's boat. He's, he's got an AmeriCat with his twin outboards.
36?
Maybe 32?
So his expectation probably would not be with twin outboards to be able to go through that, because that would require-
Again, that's a, it's a Catamaran. He bought that on purpose, because it's a very shallow draft vessel, Catamarans are. I don't know what his expectations were, but again, this wasn't the, and again, I'm, we're happy to entertain all of this kind of discussion, but it wasn't so much about boating, because we did try to go to Oyster Bay and this whole, and, and to Seminole, both of which are also involved in this, and we did expect a lot of public benefit. There was supposed to be a landing created where the public could go onto the island and what have you. That never happened. So the county really didn't finish what was originally contemplated in that document anyway. I don't, I believe that was in the documents, but the, this started as a restoration and finished as a restoration. We, we, our whole purpose, because Pete Tyson started this, not me, not Anna. Peter Tyson was the president of St. Christopher Harbor. I owned my property, but I was only up here a couple days a week, if that. So I was just sending money when they assessed, and his original expectation was to restore all of that tidal flow and Head Island, and that, we'll call it a channel, not a dredged channel, but a channel. His expectation, and I wish he was here, but he's out of town, I believe, was to restore that to its original condition.
I believe that the original permit, though, applied for by St. Christopher's, it, it would have prohibited that.
No, I don't think so. I, with all due respect, I, I would, that's the part where I would, I would say, "No, that's not necess-" No, we have no way, it's very hindsight's great. We have no way to know that. I said, "If I was running this project at the point where I got rid of the dredge," because the dredge, it took care of itself. The guy on the barge was a no-brainer. He had to get in there. He had no way to get in. He had to dig his way in. DEP was fine with that. Army Corps at the point was fine with that. Had he dug his way in, we wouldn't be here today. You'd have your 45 grand. All, all would be great. When we changed over to doing it off land, that hoe could only reach so far. He's on the edge of land. He's reaching with a big tracko, digging it out. Got the plug out, no argument. But having said that, we clearly knew, it was fait accompli. We knew we weren't going to get that biomass out. We knew the restoration was going to fall somewhat short of what our expectations were. And yes, you're absolutely correct in saying that our expectations were that we'd be able to get these boats putt-putt in and out of there, because you're not going to jump up on plane through that, but you're going over to the moorings channel and then out to the intercoastal. Again, it's a no-win. I think Mrs. Solari summed it up correctly, and I should add, for Chairman O'Brien, just for your edification. We've talked and sent out to all of our homeowners. It's only gotten worse, not better, because, as Anna said, they're looking at us with this document, which is what they wrote their checks based on, and they've never stopped saying, "Well, why didn't Oyster Bay pay? Why didn't, why are we doing this at all? Why didn't the county do it?" We fought against all of that just to champion the cause and to get this restoration finished. And escrowing the 15,000, we would contemplate that we're going to come up with a difference to do it, and that's not going to happen. Our community's not going to chip in-
I'll take that option off the table then. Commissioner Adams, do you have a comment?
Yes, so this whole situation reminds me of something my mom always says, which is, "No good deed goes unpunished." And I really feel like that's where we are at this point.
Yeah, it is.
Um, I feel like all I have to go on is kind of the documents and the agenda items that's happened before me, but my guess is that this was intended to be a good faith partnership between the county and the association. We inherited permits that had specific outlines of what could and could not occur. I believe that the county probably had the people on staff to really understand what that meant, and I don't think that you guys in the homeowners' association fully understood the fact that when you have permits from DEP and the Army Corps, you cannot go beyond those permits, period, or else you open yourself up to significant ramifications. So I think that is an issue. So I agree with Commissioner Solari that perhaps, you know, this is a good lesson and, and things should have maybe have been more fully understood on each side before we move forward. That being said, we did move forward, and here we are today. I think what, what is occurring right now, we're arguing over, we're splitting hairs, basically, on what the wording of an agreement means. I do agree with staff and with the other commissioners that we performed what was expected of us per the permits and per the contract. I believe that it's, it's splitting hairs to, to try to say a navigable channel when really what, what this contract is about is the footprint of a land bridge. That being said, I also feel like we have expended entirely too much time on this conversation today. I feel like we will be expending entirely too much time and entirely too much money if we continue fighting over this. I believe that a legal battle will probably cost us more than the $15,000, and as aggravating as I do find that, I would agree. Not, I don't find it aggravating that I agree with Commissioner Solari. I agree with Commissioner Solari. I mean, I realize how that came out, I'm sorry.
Most of us do.
I find, I find it aggravating, I'm finding aggravating that we are at a point where, do we, do we just let it go and accept what we get, or do we spend that extra money to try to enforce what will end up costing us more than we will get? So, I would agree with Commissioner Solari that, that let's take the thirty, let's cut our losses, and let's just move on so we can deal with other issues at hand.
Anyone else?
I just have a question. I see somebody sitting in the audience with his arms folded, that's a watchdog of dredging and activities in the river, and he doesn't have to come to the podium, but I would think that if, in other places where there's been other challenges, not this one, or other permits that have been issued, or in some cases, not issued because of the efforts of Dr. Baker, that they are kind of the watchdog, that if, if we went beyond the scope of the permit, somebody probably would have let us know that you're going in the wrong direction, that's not in your permit, and, and we do appreciate when you are that custodian watchdog for projects in the lagoon, so, we did what the permit said, not everybody always understands what, what's in the permit, and yes, sometimes you can go back and redo those, it might take a decade to get the change approved, or maybe not a decade, but a considerable amount of time in the hearings that go along with it. So I've seen him sitting in the audience with his arms folded, and if he has something to say, he can add to it, but I, we have been on this quite a bit of time.
We have, and we appreciate everything the county has done, and I appreciate that point. Having said that, be crystal clear at the mouth, and it's not up there now, at the mouth where that biomass began. DEP, with several other agencies in the boat, placed a stake and said, inside of this, to that plug, we're unconcerned, there's nothing of any value, it's all biomass. There was zero grass, to this day, there's zero grass. I was out in it, and it was like taking a picture, I was up to like mid-calf, standing in the middle of the channel the other day on low tide, it wasn't even dead-low tide. There's nothing there, there never will be, no, nothing's going to repopulate, that's not its natural condition. That biomass, that hundred yards built up because there was a plug there.
Right, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, and that should have been included in the permit, that to remove the land bridge, you need to remove this section of...
Well, again, the, if the barge and the original contractor had dug his way in, it would have been a moot point.
Well, what if the, what if the original, or the contractor wasn't the barge guy, it was a land guy, and then, then this...
It would have been a different discussion.
I think we've...
If I could sum this up, I mean, would've, could've showed us splitting hairs, but if I could just wrap it all up so we can move on, I make a motion that we accept the thirty thousand dollars and be done.
Second for discussion?
We have a motion from Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Solari, for county, or a staff recommendation, option one, which is accepting the thirty thousand as full payment. Commissioner Solari, under discussion.
Before the vote, I want to thank staff for being so patient with this and giving us that, guiding this process the whole way through, it's one of those difficult things. Again, this is a case where the way things have turned out, you just have parties on both sides that had different expectations, and given the context of each side, there was never really a good meeting of the minds, and the reason I'm going to support this and vote for this motion at the end of the day is because I don't think the taxpayers are going to be helped if we sue, because on the, on the, our side, the fifteen thousand dollars is going to be lost in the lawsuit. But on the other side, in terms of the community, it's going to really negatively impact, I think, St. Christopher's community, I mean, to go forward, it's going to cause trouble in that neighborhood that's going to go on for years. And so every once in a while, we do things where it may not, at the end of the day, be the most dollar-wise, but there's also the idea of trying to do and promote good order for the community as a whole, and sometimes on the edges, that has a value, and this is one of those cases where I believe it does have a value, so I will go ahead and I will be voting for the motion.
So, and Commissioner, I appreciate the fact that, dollar-wise, going to a legal process on this one may not save us a lot of money, but I think going forward, it has great implications. We always have developers' agreements where there's a certain cost share, contributions and things like that, and if we start accepting less than what is called for in that contract, I think we're setting a dangerous precedent that will cost us significant dollars down the road. So, I don't like, you know, setting that precedent where, okay, just somebody comes in and they don't want to pay the full amount of the contract, so...
And I think it's very good reasoning and very valuable, I just see this one as outside the scope of what would be normal developers' agreements, where you have people who regularly deal with the county and have better understanding of the context in which the agreement's made. This is a group of citizens that's not really even a homeowners' association, that was trying to get one specific task done outside, certainly their job and their normal work, so that's, and I'm not saying I'm right on this one, but that's certainly what I'm hanging my decision on today.
Okay. Any other discussion among the commissioners? We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Solari, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, nay. That motion carries three to two, with Commissioners Fletcher and O'Brien opposed. Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order. We're still under departmental matters, but we moved to Public Works, item one, traffic jet print system and software, board approval to waive the requirement for bids to purchase the traffic jet print system and software. Good morning, Mr. Speerka.
Morning, Commissioners, Rich Speerka, Public Works Director. Public Works analyzes our operations from time to time to try to be more effective and efficient. In this particular case, we looked at the sign shop. On a yearly, on a monthly basis, we make two to three hundred signs a month to replace, and the system that we have is pretty much antiquated, it takes a lot of staff time to put the signs together, so we started looking at a better way to be more efficient and effective and save money at the same time. So what we found was the Avery Dennison Traffic Jet System Printer. What this does is, it prints the, whatever we want, on the laminates that we use. Now, Avery Dennison is the manufacturer, supplier of every, of the reflective backing on all of our signs. They've got, they hold a patent on this, and it's a very effective material. They've come up, they partnered with a printing company and came up with a, this printer. It prints the letters and the numbers on the backing itself without having to cut them out and then peel them off. It's basically, the system we have now is a peeling stick. You cut them out, you peel them, and you place them on this backing, and then you place this backing on the sign. Now what we have, it's basically just like your printer. We print it out on the backing, we put it on the sign, and we're off and running. So we're looking at this as a, not only a staff cost saving, but a material savings, because the old-fashioned way, we waste a lot of material. It's just the nature of how you put the lettering and numbers on the signs. So with that said, the jet, the Avery Jet System is the only one that is engineered and supported by Avery, or by a leading industry in the backing, in the reflective backing material. It's economical, and we believe it's going to increase our efficiency. The cost of the jet printer is fifty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, and funding is available in our Transportation, Traffic Engineering, Other Machineries and Equipment account. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners waive the requirement for bids for the Avery Dennison Corporation jet, traffic jet print system, software, and any parts or service needed at a later date. Staff also recommends the Board authorize the Purchasing Division to issue purchase orders for the traffic jet print system, associated equipment, software as needed.
Rich, one question in the backup, it says the sixteen thirty-eight print system is MUTCD compliant. What does that mean?
Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Oh, there you go.
Basically, it's the bible for any sign, anything that you want to put out in the right-of-way, it's the bible we use countrywide.
Very good, I'm in, then, Mr. Jammon. Mr. Fletcher?
Rich, I appreciate the presentation, as I've noticed over the years with some of the signs, that, you know, the old cut, paste, and scalpel, cut and applying to the letters, does not bode well with the harsh Florida sun, and as most of us know, we see that peeling, and you, a lot of your time is spent on replacing existing signs after just a couple of years. So with that, this is fully supportive. As far as the sole source, I have to say that, you know, anybody with a home printer knows, if you use the wrong paper or product inside of the device, you're going to compromise the integrity of the product in the end result. So, with that, I'm happy to fully support and move staff recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher, second by Commissioner Adams. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. Thank you, Rich. Next item under Public Works is the Johns Island Request for Temporary Easement for Reclaimed Water Line. Rich, welcome again.
Back again. Back in December of two thousand seventeen, the Board entered into an agreement with the Johns Island Water Management Incorporated, or Johns Island, as we call it, to provide reclaimed water to Johns Island. As part of that agreement, Johns Island was required at their expense to design, permit, and construct the water system, the reclaimed water system, that would take the water from Seventy-seventh Street and deliver it to Johns Island. Johns Island is currently in the permitting process to obtain permits from Indian River County Public Works and Utilities and DEP. As part of the DEP permitting process, DEP requested that the county either co-sign the permit application, or be a co-applicant for the permit, or provide temporary easements through Johns Island to install the sub-aquous crossing from the east side of the Indian River Lagoon, or to the west side. This would require us to put in, to give easements on the mainland side at Sixty-ninth Street, an easement, a temporary, these are temporary construction easements, temporary construction easement at the cul-de-sac on the west, on the east side, and a temporary construction easement for the Bridge Tender site that we currently own, which is not county right-of-way. By providing the easements, the county will not become an applicant on the project, and it limits our liability during, during the permitting and construction of the project. Per DEP, the construction easements, the temporary construction easements, need to run with the length of the permit. They, normally, temporary construction easements are good for a couple of years, but the DEP permit is good for five, so they want it to run with the permit. Staff didn't see any issues with that. The requested temporary construction easements are for operation and maintenance. This will allow the county to provide reclaimed water to other customers on the barrier island in the future. There's no funding involved with this. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the temporary construction easement and authorize the Chair to execute said easement on behalf of the county upon review and approval of the easements by the county attorney as to legal form and sufficiency.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Rich, okay, Commissioner's slide?
Rich, is this type of construction easement for something going under the lagoon usual or unusual? Another way of asking the question...
It's not really that unusual.
So are there a number of things that go underneath the lagoon?
Yeah, right now, there are Florida powers out there, they've got two or three crossings. I've personally done two sub-aquous crossings in my days of construction. It's not, it's not unheard of. Today's technology has gotten better and better, where they can go really deep or shallow and follow it, and it, it allows you to install a pipeline without being, without messing with the environment, especially under wetlands and things like that.
So sub-aquous crossings have been found, basically, to be low-risk or high-risk?
I would say low-risk.
Okay, thank you.
And, Rich, still to come will be like a right-of-way permit and a couple other things where we could make sure that the county has no liability if there is any environmental calamities?
Yes, sir, we're doing, they resubmitted actually yesterday for the entire run, which starts at Seventy-seventh Street and runs all the way to Winter Beach Road out to A-1A.
Okay, great. Any other commissioners at this point? Okay, I think we have some folks in the audience that probably are speaking on both sides of this. Why don't we go ahead, is there anyone from Johns Island Water Management that would like to speak to this? Yep?
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... a pipeline under the lagoon onto county-owned land on the east side of the river is estimated to be up to one week of even more deafening uninterrupted noise for 24 hours per day. In other words, a number of residents on the western boundary of the shores will be forced to move out of their homes during this time for a proposed project we didn't ask for is unnecessary and do not want. I will leave details of the issue of the risk to the Florida aquifer and a known fault line beneath the Indian River to other more knowledgeable speakers today. Suffice it to say, we are in agreement that the level of damage risk involved, potential for future leaks and inability to repair any proportion of the proposed 80-foot-deep mile-long pipeline constitutes a risk I hope that you, in your role as permit granters, would be hesitant to take. All previous points and the fact that there is indeed an existing alternative to the Johns Island goal to supply reuse water for its two island golf courses, an alternative route which utilizes already existing county pipeline infrastructure, both on the mainland and from the mainland to the island, which can easily be run down south A1A to Johns Island, these more than suffice, we believe, for the following request. Along with many others, some able to be here today and some too far away at this time, we strongly urge that this body reject this easement proposal. At the very least, we request the commission table the proposal item until a preliminary feasibility study of the obvious alternative route is completed and reported. Thank you for listening to all county residents.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Good morning, welcome. Your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Christine Davis, 170 Island Sanctuary at the shores, Vera Beach. And I'm speaking today by proxy for neighbors who are also residents at the shores, Gail and Si Evangelidi. Gail, by the way, is a retired geologist. They want me to say that they are, they expressed strongly that they oppose this project and are putting the commissioners on notice that they must not proceed with the permit and they will be held personally responsible for damages that have a high probability of occurring to nearby structures. Personally responsible for a breach in the strata that may occur in the Florida aquifer, which will affect the fresh water in the aquifer. And personally responsible for carcinogens and toxin materials that may penetrate the Indian River Lagoon and also be personally responsible for land subsidence from vibrations occurring from the horizontal drilling. They are not doing due diligence by requiring, requiring the project be diverted to the 510 Bridge and along A1A. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Commissioner's slide.
I may, I just wanted to ask our attorney something. So Mr. Reingold, first off, there were a number of personally responsible for this, personally responsible for that, personally responsible for that. Is your understanding here is if we vote in good faith for this matter, that we would be personally responsible for anything?
I do not believe you would be personally responsible for anything.
Okay, and there are a number of things that talked about damages to the environment and damages to carcinogens and damages to that. My understanding was that we had other agencies in Florida that were under state statute responsible for these type of items and that this was a hearing for a temporary easement. So is it the case that we should be worried about carcinogens today for today's item or damage to the Florida aquifer or others, or there are actually other agencies in the state of Florida that ought to be focused on these issues?
I believe there are other agencies of Florida who will be reviewing actual permits, such as DEP, who will be, have the bore expertise in these subject matters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Is there anyone else wishes to speak from the public? Yes, sir, please come up, you're welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Ether at 200 Shores Drive in Indian River Shores, Florida. So first of all, thank you Chairman O'Brien and Commissioners for the chance to speak with you about this matter. You've heard a little bit about this already, but I believe it's important for you to have awareness of the significant public concern that regards the Johns Island wastewater effluent pipelines currently proposed, controversial routing, which is unnecessarily and avoidably under the Indian River Lagoon. Due to taxpayer concerns, as you heard before, Senator Debbie Mayfield hosted a public meeting on this subject on April 18th, which brought over 60 participants. The meeting was raucous, with many citizens voicing concerns about environmental issues, which include the risk of frac-out, leakage into the lagoon during construction, the risk of wastewater effluent leakage into the lagoon during the service life of the pipeline, the risk of Florida aquifer damage due to heavy vibrations induced by the industrial directional drill path crossing directly over a known USGS fault line in the lagoon in this area. The matter of a special easement should not be taken lightly. We believe the county has no business facilitating this unnecessary environmental risk, regardless of other agencies' comments on this matter that I would be glad to discuss further with you in more detail, solely for the convenience of a private party when an alternative pipeline path option likely exists that does not require any sub-aqueous pipeline installation or operations in the lagoon. Further, this action will be harmful to non-beneficiaries due to this pipeline's current painfully contorted routing. This routing interestingly avoids any inconvenience, nuisance and potential structural damage to Johns Island residents and instead places these, places these issues directly on its neighbors. Additionally, this routing is fiscally irresponsible for the county. Should there ever be leakage of the mile-long section of this pipeline, 80 feet underneath the Indian River, the county and its taxpayers will be exposed to a completely non-reparable, useless, $3 million abandoned asset. An alternative routing option likely exists, which accomplishes the exact same supply goal, places all pipeline assets around, along current county rights-of-way entirely along A1A, and is very likely to carry a lower cost. The county is already diligently working with Johns Island Water Management on the issuance of utility and public works rights-of-way, right-of-way permits, as it would do fairly and equitably for any applicant. However, this proposed easement over right-of-way action has zero to do with the county's permitting business or requirements. Rather, it's an exceptional preferential and precedent-setting action. Johns Island Water Management is not your boss. The taxpayers are, and we object to this contorted action for a private party which will introduce environmental risk, cause us harm, is unnecessary and is fiscally irresponsible to the taxpayers. As a result, we ask that the board either reject this easement proposal or at a minimum not act in haste now until, and instead table it until further information on the non-sub-aqueous A1A routing is reported back to you. As included in the invocation today by the Reverend Holloway, thank you for protecting all county citizens by your actions. I also have some slides which would illustrate exactly what we're talking about in the routing, if you would be interested to see those.
Is it something we can put on the Elmo and put up?
I have a stick, is it a memory stick? Is that?
If you can't, we're not going to feel good about that Avery sign thing.
It should be a sign with the instructions.
It's the bottom, it's the bottom one. Yes, thank you. So just, just, it's always easier to see what, what's being described and is that large enough on the screen? Hopefully. What you're seeing in purple here, actually, all of the colors represent the currently proposed pipeline. And what you're seeing in purple represents existing county 16-inch sub-aqueous pipeline that, like I said, already exists. The red represents what is currently being proposed under, under the current routing that's under discussion. Johns Island Club is over on the right, you'll see where the terminus is at Johns Island Water Management. Immediately to the left of that is, is our community called the shores. If you could move down one more slide, please. So it's readily accessible information that large bore directional drilling does inject vibration and frac-out risk during, during the construction period. The, this is very heavy industrial equipment, it's very noisy, and the risk here is that due to the radial vibration that emanates from this type of equipment, the area where the proposed drilling is, is proposed to take place, happens to cross directly over a USGS identified fault line. Additionally, there is a risk, there is always a risk with this type of drilling, of something called frac-out. And what that is, is it's the scape of the drilling fluid beyond the, beyond the intended path of the bore itself. And in this case, what would happen is that fluid would then be percolating up into the Indian River Lagoon. So if we could move to the next slide, please. This is what we're talking about, just so everyone can see. On the right here, what you'll see is actually the US Geological Survey fault line. It is thick, dark gray line that is running north and south. And what you see in red is the proposed drilling path that crosses directly over that USGS fault line. The concern that USGS identified, and this is a 2001 study, so it's fairly new, historically, by the way, I would say, that the Florida Department of Environmental Protection was not aware that this fault line existed until our geologist did the research to discover that in fact the USGS was aware of this fault line and had plotted it. So you'll see in yellow, the, the risk here, and this isn't directly relating to the drilling, this is a risk anyway, that the concern that prompted, prompted the investigation is the possible faulting at depth has provided a pathway for the upward migration of saline water from the lower Floridian to the potable supply within the upper Floridian aquifer. What our geologist is concerned about is the notion that injecting these vibrations at 80 feet deep, which will radiate through the limestone, has the potential to open up this fault line and to damage the aquifer. If we could move to the next slide, please. So this is zooming in more closely on the, the sub-aqueous portion and the island side, and you'll see that on the left there is the, is the proposed direction of the drilling. And then starting on the island side, you'll see where the directional drills are located in that red box, or the proposed directional drills are located in that red box, immediately adjacent to a conservation wetlands, and then primarily trenching the west of, the rest of the way to Johns Island over on the right where the blue dot is. The, the issues that we see here are, first of all, as listed, that this requires what we see as a very contorted easement from the county that otherwise the county would not need to take in terms of this action for its permitting. It injects the highest risk of aquifer damage across the fault line, which you'll see is depicted here on this, on this map. The frac-out risk we talked about, the permanent risk that exists here even when the pipeline is installed. Look, we all know that things go wrong and, and main, water mains do break. If this one breaks, it's under the Indian River Lagoon and it's wastewater effluent water that does not belong in the lagoon. Further, as you've heard before, the, this particular routing jeopardizes the homes of non-beneficiaries, and this is primarily also due to the proposed drilling and the vibrations that are caused. You'll notice in that red box in the middle of the page, near the yellow triangle where the conservation wetlands is, that's where all our homes are. And it is, it is a known, it is a known thing that these heavy industrial directional drills create these vibrations, which in turn can, can cause structural damage, among other things. We're worried about that. And finally, it, it injects a pollution risk into the conservation wetlands, which is immediately adjacent to where the proposed bore pit is, as depicted by the red square in the middle of that, of that slide. If we could move to the next one, please. This is what we ask the county to consider, is on this picture, what you will see is depicted in purple are the existing county-owned wastewater effluent pipes. The solid purple represents a 16-inch pipe. The double thinner purple line, which runs along currently around, along the bridge over County Road 510, is a dual 12-inch pipe that has similar or larger carrying capability in terms of water capacity to a single 16-inch pipe, so it's sufficient. And then after that point, you will see that there is another solid purple line representing across the island, representing another 16-inch pipe. And then the termination of the 16-inch equivalency ends at County Road 510 and A1A. Down A1A, you'll see in a dashed purple line is eight-inch pipeline infrastructure that could either be used under further pressurization or could be replaced with a 16-inch pipeline fundamentally from the intersection of A1A and County Road 510 down to Johns Island. The question that we have been asking and continue to ask, but we have not yet presented to, to this commission because we've not yet had the opportunity to do so, is why isn't this being given more serious consideration by the applicants as well as the county? We have, we have an independent professional engineer who has on the back, back of an envelope measure, because we asked him, look, to me, I am an engineer, it looks to me as though this routing as an alternative is actually less costly. It also clearly has more benefits to the county because this routing would also enable the county to have stubouts for all of the communities between County Road 510 and A1A all the way down to Johns Island. We were also, we're also told by a back of the envelope study that this should be less expensive for Johns Island as well. So there's a piece of the puzzle that just seems to be missing here, is we, we should get the data to understand clearly what the implications of this routing are. There are plainly what appear to be significant benefits. It eliminates all environmental risk, regardless who is fundamentally responsible for protecting the environment, I would assert the county is too. And, and so what we are asking for is look at this option, get, get a preliminary reading of this option before you bend over backwards to issue an easement, which is not a part of your permitting process. That would, that would essentially be the final step to allowing this project to go forward as planned. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, Commissioner Adams has a time certain at 11:30, so I'm going to ask if anyone from Johns Island wishes to speak at this point, maybe address some of the comments from the public. Good morning and welcome. Your name and address, please.
Good morning, I'm David Knight with Knight-McGuire and Associates, representing Johns Island Water Management Company. This now nearing afternoon. And we take seriously the concerns that the adjacent citizens have to location of our project and, and issues associated with our project that they, they have brought up. We're working on those issues diligently and have, had ongoing work on this with the DEP as a primary agency and with the citizens. We are going to make sure that all of the items are addressed, as we've had in the past already with noise and vibration and some of their other considerations. We have done a lot of work on the alternate route analysis before this project got started, and there really is no missing link. This is simply the appropriate location for this project, for this client, for this time, and for the county as moving along in the future to service the entire north barrier island. Island with reuse effluent, which is a preferred source of IQ water for irrigation source. So, I don't want to take up any more time on this particular item for an easement for this, but to make you understand that the issues of their concern are not taken lightly and are being addressed with our office and Johns Island with the state.
Commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Flory.
Couple of questions. First, my understanding is that the size, that Johns Island wants X amount of water from this pipe, but that it's actually sized for a greater amount of water.
It's sized for the county's use as well, and ultimately, I would assume is going to be connected to their other pipe that's currently going underneath the river as well at Wabaso Bridge. So, those dual twelve inch lines that was referred to earlier are actually sub-aquous lines, similar to the one that we're going to be constructing here. Ultimately, they would be connected. Golf courses are your best source for distributing effluent water. They have professional water managers associated with that.
Too many words. The pipe is more than just Johns Island.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to establish. And I was also told, and actually I had conversations with residents of The Shores, that they wanted some of that extra water, and they wanted it for a lake on The Shores' property.
Absolutely. The Shores and River Club as well are in the permitting package for the.
Okay, because a number of times today, this morning, it's been brought out that there is only one beneficiary for this line, and it's J.I.
Absolutely not.
So, basically, there is many beneficiaries for this line, which J.I. is paying for as there are for any other county lines.
Johns Island is constructing this line with their money and donating it to the county upon completion.
And so, it is Johns Island's money, but it's brought up that the alternate route going north and then over Wabaso Bridge would be cheaper. If it's Johns Island's money, why aren't they using that route?
It's not cheaper.
It's not cheaper. And have you done more than a back-of-the-envelope study on the cost?
Yes, we have. And we have issues with the capacity and deliverability with that line extension as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
And David, the other thing is, one thing to reduce the noise and vibration, are you looking at doing the drilling from the mainland side?
We, yes, the drilling will occur from both sides, actually. It starts out with a very small pilot hole, just to clear the route, and the drilling will occur from both sides. So, it's not like the old days where you miss in the middle. They're pretty good at this now.
But there's no way to do all the drilling from the mainland side to reduce any more of the vibration?
There was one company that we researched, that we found in the United States, that has equipment capable of doing that, and they are not interested in coming here for this small job.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, is there any other questions of Mr. Knight?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, sir, we've got a few minutes, so if you'd like to speak, sir, come on up. Try to keep it as brief as possible. Good morning. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Larry Wapnick. As many of you know, I am a resident in The Shores, and I am a neighbor of all of those people who spoke up. And I live directly across from Mr. Thomas Ether, and so my home is directly impacted by this whole ordeal. Number one, the water is not compatible with our lakes. We will not be using it. We got all of this information. We had all of these evaluations done. And our lakes hook up to an aquifer, which then empties into the lagoon. So, to go ahead and put water that is not that well-processed and throw it into the lagoon is a violation of environmental protection and everything else. I mean, we're only killing ourselves. My wife has certain issues, chronic fatigue syndrome. I have a son who lives with us, who's handicapped, and an erotic dog, a crazy one, who, with the slightest bit of a sound, we can't even walk him outside. But the impact that this will have on us and our neighborhood, you've heard it from my neighbors, everybody who lives here loves living in this county. They love everything that's being done with this exception. It's like David against Goliath. To go ahead and bring a pipeline right down our road and impact us, instead of bringing it directly, if you need that water so badly, and the water would be for Johns Island, not for us in The Shores, you need that water so badly, bring it directly across then. I mean, if that's what we have to put up with. But to go ahead and impact the community just for a golf course and for water that we can't use, and then to hear that everything is being done to make all kinds of arrangements with us so that the noise will not impact, that's baloney. We're resting upon your heads. I moved here, and I've done a lot for the community, especially Indian River County, and it's because we love living here. But to go ahead and be impacted this way with your own home just for a golf course when decisions could be made and there are other alternatives that have been presented by the people living in The Shores, it just doesn't make sense. I'm against it, and I hope that you feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wapnick. Dr. Baker, Jewish.
Yes, I'd like to make a few comments, if I could. I appreciate the need to find more reuse water customers. I mean, that's really important. We are a growing county, and we need to find a solution for our poop, as we had the problem a couple of weeks ago with, out at the ranches, what do we do with it? I do have some questions, though. Is the purpose to drill and bore eighty feet into a superficial aquifer a good idea? Can it have any grave environmental consequences as well as expense? Commissioner Salarra, you mentioned, are there other agencies that could be looking into the harmful effects? We know what some of these agencies are when we were talking about bio solids. We have the EP that's going to be worrying about bio solids, but they're the ones that are going to be reviewing this project, too. Are we trusting the DEP to do the right decision? I don't know. Have we looked at all the independent options for this project? I think the one object of going across the Wabaso Bridge is a possibility. I think we should maybe get an independent assessment to see if this is a good alternative. McGuire is saying that, and he's being paid for by the St. Johns folks, that they looked into it and it's just as cost-effective, but is that really the fact? I think that we're finding that other people maybe have some other considerations about that or concerns. What is the cost of the final construction? And I know that St. John's is going to pay for the, or Johns Island is going to be paying for laying the pipe, but the county is going to be responsible for maintaining it in the future. I mean, it's going to be your responsibility. If it breaks, you're going to be the ones that's going to be fixing it. And it's probably almost impossible to fix a break in a pipe that's eighty feet down in the superficial aquifer. I mean, I don't know how you're going to do that. I don't know if, we have all these problems with fracking. There, you want to cause the breaks to occur. You want to discharge and have, so all that oil and all that stuff comes up so that you can get a hold of it. Here, we don't want to have any breakage, so I'm not sure that how the technique is working. And is it safe across that fault line? I think with new information and just in the last, since 2000, they're coming up some ideas. What is the cost of the repairs, if you're even going to think about it? What are the environmental risks? I think that I would be concerned about that. There are, on the east end, when the easement there, there are gopher tortoises there. There is indigo snakes there. So, have these environmental issues been considered? And have they consulted with the Corps of Engineers, the Fish and Wildlife Service, the federal agencies? I don't know. They've talked about DEP, but, you know, I'd like to see some of the feds get involved in this a little bit. Is there, of course, what is about the bacteria and other things that are going on in this water that we'd be putting out there? The reason we have the reused water going into the golf courses is so it doesn't go into the lagoon. So, if there is a problem, it's going to go into the lagoon, and I would be concerned about that. So, I recommend that we table this. And I wouldn't make a decision today, but try to find out some independent issues, answers to some of these questions. And it's new to me. I'm just learning about this. That's why I came here today. But, you know, it has a concern for the future, I think, for our county. We're trying to protect that lagoon, and I don't like putting a big pipe, sixteen inch pipe, eighty feet down in the ground in the superficial aquifer, because that is going to, that water can move around in that superficial aquifer very easily and go in different directions. So, water is still water, and we're spending many millions and trying to handle our water and taking care of the runoff and everything else that we have. And so, I think this takes some serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Very quickly, real, real quick, please. Okay. Name and address, please.
My name is Sue Ether, and I live at 200 Shores Drive. I have a comment and two very quick questions. I'd like to make it very clear that we're not asking for this to be abandoned quickly. We're asking for more facts to come to the table. We're asking for open discussion and facts, so this can be a fact-based decision for you as commissioners and as stewards of our environment. And I have two questions. With all due respect to Mr. Knight, he has said today that he's been working with the applicant and working with the citizens who have concerns, and they have looked at the alternative coming down A-1A, and it's not feasible. And as an active participant in all these discussions, I've never seen a document. I've never had that discussion, and I'm asking, have you commissioners seen that to know that it's not feasible? My second question, go ahead.
Rich, have we seen it, or just going with what Mr. Knight said?
We haven't seen any documentation, just on what Mr. Knight said. Unless Jason had a meeting with him, he may be able to.
I'm not aware of any specific document, but they've done an analysis that they've determined it's a challenge.
So, I would ask the commissioners to review those documents and have a staff report directly on those documents. The second piece is, I would like to ask the county administrator if it is the county's intent to have some kind of study done to look at this, either for a future or for a near-term future option to have the pipes taken from the intersection of Wabaso Bridge Road and A-1A down A-1A to Johns Island or another place.
We don't have a study at this time. We do have an obligation with our franchise, with the town, to look at distributing the reused water beyond just Johns Island's use. So, we do have a responsibility, we think, to look at the ability to move the water north or south along A-1A.
So, there is no study contemplated to get these facts for the commissioners at this time?
We have reached out to an engineer to look at an alternate path, but that, we haven't brought anything before the county commission for that at this time.
So, at this time, there isn't, but there would in the future be some information you could bring to them. Is that correct?
There is a potential, but I will point out that this is a Johns Island project that they're moving forward with, with a construction project, and it's hard for the county to make a determination of which direction Johns Island needs to go on.
I understand that, and I appreciate your answer, County Administrator Brown. And I would ask, I would ask the commissioners to consider this because there is, as Mr. Ether pointed out, there is a fiscally, there's a fiscally responsible action for keeping this pipeline over the long haul, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll go ahead and begin. Two things I'll say preliminarily is, one is that this is something for a temporary easement. And a lot of the issues that have been brought up today are issues that would be handled by other groups. And I'll agree with Dr. Baker that, you know, it's always chancy when you have somebody like FDEP to look at some of the environmental concerns, but I've held that the, if there's a problem with an administrative agency, it's not doing its job accurately, that the tact we ought to take is to do the political work necessary to get that agency to do its work correctly and not to bypass it, especially by going to something like a county commission and asking the county commission to address issues over which it has no expertise. So, that helps shapes my opinion a little bit today. Second part is, when the, the one lady brought up the idea that this ought to be fact-based, and I agree with her, but a previous lady talked about, or gave us a statement from a geologist, which repeated personally responsible four times and just made an emotional appeal to somehow my personal responsibility, which I've really found under the circumstances disturbing. I believe that the county staff has made a recommendation which is appropriate for us today, so I'm going to move staff recommendations to grant the temporary easement.
We have a motion by Commissioner Flory, seconded by Commissioner Flesher. Any discussion from the commissioners? Okay. We'll go ahead and proceed to vote on the motion. All in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. I'd like to thank all of you folks for coming out this morning, and I think that we will continue to monitor this and keep an eye on it, and we'll move forward with that. And also, at this time, Commissioner Adams is excused. Good luck with your engagement. That takes us to Utility Services, Blue Cypress Lake Testing Update. Good morning, Mr. Burke.
Good morning. For the record, Vincent Burke, Director of Utility Services. To my right is Eric Cheris, Environmental Compliance Specialist. We're going to talk about the Blue Cypress Lake testing and a short update to go over what staff has found in a short amount of time. If you recall, the board back in last month had directed staff to get an idea of what testing had been done or is continuing to be done in and around the Blue Cypress Lake area. So, we put together an agenda item that just covered some of the basics, noting that Blue Cypress Lake is one that has a surface area nearly eleven square miles, been identified by many as a relatively unspoiled ecosystem. There's been some on and off again testing in and around the area going back as far as 1979. Some of the regulatory agencies have posted that information on a database that can be stored. We put a hyperlink into the agenda. It's called STOREET, which is the Water Quality Data Storage and Retrieval System, which is operated and maintained by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, including St. John's River Water Management District does some additional testing. We have some of those regulatory agencies that are listed in the agenda, so including but not limited to the FDEP out of the Central District, the FDIP out of the Southeast District in West Palm Beach. We have the St. John's River Water Management District. If we recall, last month, there was a group called the Florida Lake Watch that had provided the commission and the clerk some information, so we included that on the matrix, as well as recent testing by Ocean Research and Conservation out of Fort Pierce, otherwise known as ORCA. So, in all about close to 38,000 individual tests, they're summarized through a matrix just to show what those parameters are on the second page of your agenda, starting with algal growth potential, alphabetically listed, going all the way down to turbidity and volatile solids. So, there's a lot of data that has been collected and put online. What I do not know at this point is whether or not there's been an analysis of how that data is trending and what we can expect from the interpretation of that data. But we tried to include some of the attachments, and the presentation is just to kind of go over what we've found so far. And I'm going to kind of defer to my right, Eric Cheris, who's been able to compile this information, kind of step you through some of the information that we've been able to gather.
Eric Cheris, the Utilities Department. As Vincent had said, we've been looking through the readily available data that's out there. The DEP does have the storage system, STOREET, as well as what they call WINS, which is actually replacing the STOREET. It's the Watershed Information Network. These systems are used and queried to retrieve the data that is copied in this presentation. Some of these maps do look kind of busy, and I apologize about that. It's just to show you that there is and has been a lot of monitoring that's been done around, in and around the lake. Focus of this presentation pretty much is with regards to the lake itself in the immediate vicinity. But if we had a live link here, you could back out a little bit and see that there are additional monitoring sites in the immediate vicinity of the lake as well. So, but I'm going to focus here primarily on the data that's been collected in the lake.
And Eric, before you leave that, Vinnie, do you have a cursor you can move on the screen? Can you, Eric, where is the Presley Ranch in relation on this map? And where would any canal or drainage from the Presley Ranch enter Blue Cypress Lake?
Well, the Presley Ranch is going to be on the left hand, like the lower left-hand corner. It pretty much, you can see my cursor, okay. It's pretty much this property here that you're seeing.
Eric, I think it's 1.8 miles from the lake, and I think it's a little bit closer towards, going down towards Route 60. And from a map I was looking at yesterday, it doesn't seem to be necessarily any real canals. It seems more like there's a slough that goes from the north side of Presley Ranch at that point to Blue Cypress Lake. a slew that goes from the north side of Presley Ranch at that point to Blue Cypress Lake.
I was on the property appraisal site, and I thought that Presley Ranch had some land north of the, of the...
It does. It has a whole slew of land along that side, too.
Right.
But I believe where they're dropping the biosolids is actually the piece that's to the, to the south and just a little bit to the west.
In their new nutrient management plan, they do have several different areas in which they can apply biosolids. I mean, I think there's twenty-some-odd different zones out there.
Around this area. Here's, here's the access road, but we can try to put the satellite on. So, and around this area here, and portions of the property here. This is State Road sixty, and...
Help place these.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, you know, for the purpose of this study here, I was really focusing on the water quality in the lake.
Right.
But again, if we, you know, turn on the, the WINS network, you can see that there is some monitoring sites that have been taken place west of the lake as well, which would probably encompass that area. I'm sorry. A lot of the sites, and again, a lot of the sites throughout the forty-year history or thirty-nine-year history have been retired. Some of them are still ongoing. I tried to focus on the ones that are going to give us the current data, just for the fact that some of these historical sites, you know, two thousand and three or two thousand and six, probably is not going to help us, you know, look at the water quality at this point here. So, there is historical sites, though, just to give you a heads up. There's also been some sediment, sediment monitoring that's been done in the lake, as well as a couple of groundwater sampling wells that have been tested throughout time. But again, those have not been current. I think the seven, monitoring was done in two thousand and six, and the groundwater was done probably two thousand and three, two thousand and six timeframe as well. So, but again, this just shows us that we have several different agencies collecting the data. I pretty much grouped the DEP as one agency, whether it's the Southeast District or the deer, or folks out of Tallahassee, or even the Central District. I just call it the DEP at this park. But we do break down the data in the, in the database, so. One of the other data repositories is done through St. John's River Water Management District. They seem to have a lot more of the historical sites that do, you know, give us the ability to see what's taking place over the past thirty-nine years at the site. DEP seems to be a little bit more sporadic in their testing, but St. John's has a very in-depth history. But you'll see on this slide here, we do show, even St. John's, I mean, they've got very few sites that they're going to consider as current. Again, I don't have any, you know, notifications on this slide, but the next slide will actually tell us, you know, where we start having some of the active sites. And again, this is just the data that's been grabbed from the various data sources. One thing to note, though, is total nitrogen is, it's not really an analyte. I mean, total nitrogen is a calculation of several components of the nitrogen species, the total kaldon nitrogen and the nitrate-nitrite. Having said that, you know, we added those two together to get this data here. So, so this is what shows us at this site here, which is the dead center of the Blue Cypress Lake, St. John's has been monitoring this since nineteen seventy-nine, and you'll see they've been monitoring nitrogen and phosphorus, along with a slew of other parameters, like Vincent was saying. So, there is a lot of stuff. I kind of didn't focus on the, the physical parameters. I was more focused on the nitrogen and phosphorus, as those were the items of concern that we discussed. But, you know, there is an extensive list of data, as Blue Cypress Lake is a Class One Surface Water Body, so they do play.
Eric, help me with the, what the two graphs mean. If I look at it, I'd say that you couldn't tell really much significant from the nitrogen. It may or may not be going up. But to me, that there's a trend of the phosphorus, strong enough to say that in the last roughly ten years, the phosphorus problem has gotten worse. Does that have any?
You're coming to the same conclusion, that some of the representatives from the Water Management District have come from as well. I think they, they were in one of the articles, I think it started back in April or something like that, that did say they noticed an upward tick of the phosphorus. You're right with the nitrogen. The nitrogen is pretty steady, and we're going to see, you know, peaks and valleys, just, I mean, it's a realistic data point. But again, the phosphorus is what the, Water Management District did acknowledge, that it appears to be an upward tick, you know, especially if you look at the thirty, forty-year history, starting at a value of, I believe, like around point, point oh five, point oh six, and now they actually had a high of point three. So that was enough that they, they had seen a, an uptick in there.
That's how they read it. Is that how you read it?
Again, my, my, my point was to collect the data. There is an upward trend. I, you know, I can interpret it, because like I said, unfortunately, that the other agencies do look at that. I would agree with, with what the Water Management District is saying, that there is an upward tick. The upward tick.
I would concur. It does look like in the last, since about oh seven, the trend does seem to be an increasing level.
At this location, though. Okay, as we move further, and again, I apologize about not giving you this in the attachments, but I kind of wanted to make sure the presentation material was here. But you're right, at this location here, you know, it's probably around the, you know, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight timeframe, you know, maybe even a little early, two thousand and seven, you will see that it does appear to showing up with trend.
And then Eric, can you give a opinion on relatively, are these numbers high? Are they low? Are they normal?
They are approaching, you know, fairly elevated values on the phosphorus. Nitrogen, again, you're not going to get down to zero. I mean, you will never see zero. The nitrogen values, in my mind, are stable and they're not going to be, you know, increasing or decreasing or anything like that. That's, that's what you would expect to see in surface water bodies. You know, the trended upward trend for the phosphorus, I agree with the districts. I mean, it is, it is a trend that is going up. You know, it is not what you would expect to see if it was, you know, total, you know, pristine environment. I mean, why, why is it an upward trend, I guess is the question. And that's what the Water Management District, you know, pretty much has said as well. So, I'm not putting any links there. I'm just saying that on this site, which is the dead center of the lake, now there, there, over the forty years of time as well, there has been advances in monitoring. So, I mean, am I comparing apples and apples? You know, theoretically, the methods that have they had, as the methods have been improved and modified, they should mirror what had done, been done historically. So, but again, there has been advances that you see in this. But again, we're focusing on this one sample. As we move further on here, you'll see this is one of the other samples in the, in the general vicinity of Blue Cypress. It's in the lower left-hand, lower right-hand corner down here. We do not see that same trend for the phosphorus. Again, nitrogen, again, we're probably, probably going to focus on the, on the phosphorus, as that's what the Water Management District did. But the nitrogen does not appear to be any trend. This is, you know, a stable data set, so.
But if we're talking about if, we so far indicated there's a correlation, you know, just a correlation between the biosolids and the water quality of Blue Cypress Lake. And if we've identified the ranches as the source of the phosphorus, and those are to the west, we wouldn't expect that area to be showing enhanced phosphorus, because the direction of the water from those ranches is definitely north and into the Blue Cypress Lake, not to the east of the lake.
I would add that there are two permitted sites for biosolids application east of the lake, though. So, I mean, we're focusing on one that's west, but, but there are other...
How close to that site, then?
I'm, I'm not aware exactly how.
I don't think they're that close. So, but would they, but the other site is very close with a direct, again, as I read the maps, a direct basically slew into the lake. So, I mean, from, I'm just, again, not knowing anything about this, to me, this would be consistent with an idea that biosolids from the ranch is possibly a cause of the problem.
And, well, you know, looking back at this previous slide here, like I said, there is an upward trend. I believe the biosolids at that application site started around the 2013 calendar year. So, but that's, you know, but again, this is just that one site. I was trying to grab throughout all this history here, I was trying to grab the sites that gave us a history, and which is why this one here, although not in the lake, was sampled and monitored since nineteen eighty-three, which is kind of why, you know, I felt that it pertinent to include in this set. We look at another one. This, you know, has only started collecting data basically in the past two years, you know, starting in two thousand and sixteen. But of this site down here, which is probably in the, in the general vicinity of one of the closer areas of, of the land application, you know, we have not seen any trending. But again, you can't trend three or four data points.
Yeah, but the absolute amount is, is two or three times what it was initially at the, the center point.
At the center point, correct.
So, I mean, it's, and so that was during the period of biosolids applications, and it's showing phosphorus levels much higher than in the center of the lake. And I guess that's all we can say.
Exactly. You know, when we get to some of these other slides, we will see that there are historical data points that, you know, were sampled back in two thousand and six. You know, it may be pertinent to, you know, have the districts try to include that in their sampling plans, in which case we can, you know, evaluate a two thousand and six data point versus a, a two thousand and eighteen data point. But again, here's another, another one of the active sampling points for St. John's River. Switching over to the Lake Watch, Lake Watch, when the gentleman was here, I believe they stopped sampling in, in two thousand and fourteen. So, we do have data on this, but again, it stopped in two thousand and fourteen. I don't have anything current. I'm just throwing these on there to show that other agencies are doing, you know, some of the sampling. You'll see, you know, even in this one here, the phosphorus is still on the top. You know, you might be seeing that similar upward trend. But again, we started seeing the upward trend on that first site, you know, back in two thousand and seven. Are you seeing it here? You know, it's an interpretation of the data. And again, I was, you know, looking to collect the data and find out what was available out there. You know, they did three monitoring sites. They had a nice eleven-year history, so from this would be great, but they stopped in two thousand and fourteen. So, you know, trying to make any current determinations on it is somewhat difficult. You know, and here's another one of their sites. So they've, they've pretty much canvassed the lake and the middle part of the lake as well. The STOREET system does include all of that, and through this, I was using some of the DEP sampling sites. Again, this site, I mean, we do have identification for all of these. There's just an overabundance of them. A lot of them, as you can see, stopped, you know, in two thousand and three, two thousand and six. Some of them were in two thousand and fourteen. This site here, which is very close to the first slide I had showed you with the St. John's showing that the phosphorus was going up, this is one of the DEP sampling sites, and they actually had a gap from two thousand and four to two thousand and nine, came back in two thousand and nine, grabbed a sample, and then had a gap again from two thousand and nine to, I think about two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, in which they grabbed a few more samples. You know, you might be able to look at this and, you know, say that it's been going up even on this site, which is in the general vicinity of the one that we have a longer history on. You know, as far as fact-finding, we were just looking at what data existed. And although there's a lot of data that exists, very few data points were ongoing or would give us current, current data. One of the things that DEP is currently doing, though, is they have their algal bloom monitoring site, and I just wanted to include this slide to show you what they, what they have. They're recording the data, and what they are showing is three recorded data sets. I believe additional sampling's been done, but I don't, I don't have the data out here from ORCA. I think ORCA's gone out there and done some sampling, but I, you know, I was, I was including the data that had been posted to the publicly available sources. So, they had done sampling on June fourteenth and fifteenth at these locations. It's identified as, you know, the South Shore, the boat ramp area, and then the, the north area. So, out of those sites there, there was the sample on the fourteenth that did have a detectable level of micrassistins in it. The detectable level was point one micrograms per liter. And like I say, I think we're looking at, you know, surface water swimming ranges of less than ten. So we were significantly lower than that. But again, these were the only data points that existed in the publicly available data that I had.
Then Eric, I, I thought that most of the blue-green algae bloom was in the southwest portion of the lake. Is that correct?
That's what I had heard. But again, that's just having it through the rumor mill and watching the news. I had not been out there to, you know, see what, what is out there. But, you know, I, I heard the same thing you had heard, so. But you put it, you know, down in this area, down here. Again, it's, it's just a, a vast amount of data does exist, but as far as what's going to give us, you know, current data to be able to compare against something historical, that, there's a minimal amount of that.
Commissioners, any other questions for Eric?
Just what, what, my understanding now is that you're going to keep on moving forward, that you're going to, are already in conversations with St. John's River Water Management District and Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and that you're going to work on finding out more specifically what tests they're continuing with, but more importantly, what tests we'd actually need on an ongoing basis moving forward to determine whether there is a man-made cause for any problems, if there are problems, in the Blue Cypress Lake. To basically see if the present, what people are talking about, correlation between the biosolids and the problems in the lake is actually something we can assert with more scientific rigor. Is that basically adequate? Or, okay. Thank you, and after watching this, good luck.
Eric, do you know, do we have any kind of rainfall monitoring out there?
There are some USGS monitoring locations that might have the rainfall. I, I didn't look at that. I saw some flows. You know, I can go back and research that, too.
You know, obviously, you've done a lot of work on this, and thank you very much. I know it's tedious and, but it'd be kind of interesting if we could go back and look at the DEP records, and if we can determine when any biosolids were delivered to the ranch, and then see if there's any rainfall data, and see if there's any correlation there. You know, a major rainfall event within, you know, two weeks of delivery or something like that, that might help tie it. Because I did notice in some of the data, there's some significant spikes. And I would, I would guess that's kind of, got to be associated with some type of major rainfall event or something. I'm just guessing. But very, very great job on putting this together. Appreciate all the hard work. And so we'll, we'll look forward to your continuing update on that. I did talk to DEP yesterday. They still can't give me a marker to test for to indicate a biosolid source. They, they say they are working on trying to figure out what to test for, but, you know, a couple of weeks down the road here, and they, they can't tell us. So, I don't know. But we'll go from there. All right. And I don't think we need any formal action on this. Staff is just recommending that they continue to monitor and work with the agency, so I don't think we need any motion. So that will, there's no county attorney matters, no commissioner matters, no special districts. Oh, Dr. Baker, I'm sorry.
Comment, I heard this morning that the governor has put an emergency stoppage or something for the five counties or something down south of us. Could we, relation to the Lake Okochobee discharge, could we ask him to just move up to one county, north, include Blue Cypress Lake into it, into the emergency to stop? I mean, he has now taken action on, on, on the discharge. And it would seem to me that we could just ask him to include Indian River County in the Blue Cypress problem, which is very similar to that.
I don't see Aaron Borg here anymore, but we can look into that.
I'm aware of the, the order that Dr. Baker is referencing, and it's certainly something, actually, I was thinking about yesterday, was trying to figure out what angle we could use to incorporate this as part of that concept.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
So, we're going to be back talking about this next week, right?
Yep.
So, if you want, maybe you can just add that aspect to, to your discussion next week.
I will certainly try to get as much information as I can.
For the record, we know that the, the department has confirmed that there's been no biosolids application since May of this year. So, in effect, it's already stopped. One, because of the rainy season. Two, because of the permit requirements. And three, because it's been a couple of months already, so.
But they've got the tons of biosolids already there, and it's going to be an ongoing problem during, as it rains, so.
But in essence, it has.
Yeah. And it may be at site.
And just on that discussion, Commissioner Flory, you were at the biosolid symposium, and the researcher, the gal from UF, what struck me is she commented that the soil can only hold X amount of phosphorus. And once it becomes saturated, it doesn't absorb any more phosphorus into the, into the soil, so it remains there where it can easily be run off. And I've, I've found that to be a very interesting fact that she put out there. It'd be really interesting to know what the, what the phosphorus level in those soils out there is, and if this biosolid dumping is just excess above and beyond the capacity of the soil to absorb the phosphorus, so.
Yeah. And regular land is going to take up and use the nitrogen.
Yeah.
While there's no reason, there's nothing there that's going to take up the phosphorus, so.
Vinnie, can you get us a copy of the DEP permit for the Presley Ranch, or Jason or somebody if we have that? Okay. Commissioners, that concludes the agenda. Anything else for the, the good of the public? Seeing none, we stand adjourned.